Good evening, everyone. Today is April 18th, 2023. It is 6:01 PM. We are at 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida, for our regular city council meeting here today. I call this meeting to order. Councilmember Willis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, council, we're going to go ahead and approve the agenda as written or with amendments.
I make a motion to approve as written.
I could second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to approve the agenda as written. Any more discussion? Councilmember Raymond? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. Normally speaking, I was concerned about consent agenda number two. Oh, it's a consent. Thank you. No problem. I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay.
We're all set.
Any more questions? Discussion?
No, thank you.
City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes. Keep the agenda as written this time. We're moving on to the presentations and interviews portion of our meeting. We have two of them tonight. Very excited. Before we get started, I want to thank everyone for being here. We are, we do have our broadcast live today. So, thank you for all those watching from home. We will be getting into the public participation portion of the meeting, but at this time, we'll go into the presentation. The first one is a proclamation declaring April 2023 as parliamentary month in the city of Cape Canaveral to the National Association of Parliamentarians, Representative Betty Cogswell. Betty here with us today? Thank you. City Manager, would you mind?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to if you want to make the presentation. The proclamation reads, whereas the birth month of Thomas Jefferson, the third president of the United States of America and author of the first American manual of parliamentary practice is an appropriate time to celebrate the use of parliamentary procedure and where it is, whereas it is fitting to honor Henry Martin Robert, author of the pocket manual of Robert's Rules of Order, deliberative assemblies, familiarly known as Robert's Rules of Order, and whereas Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, is the most widely used parliamentary authority in private and public organizations, and whereas the National Association of Parliamentarians, NAP, exists for to further the educational interests of parliamentary procedure and that the state associations assist in that purpose, and whereas the correct use of parliamentary procedure protects the rights of individual members, the majority, the minority, the absentees, and all of those together, all the while fostering orderly deliberation, and whereas the NAP has by adoption of a standing rule designated April as parliamentary law month, and whereas the NAP and the Florida State Parliamentary Association is a society dedicated to educating leaders anywhere and effective meeting management through the use of parliamentary procedure, and whereas the vision of the NAP is to promote or to provide parliamentary leadership to the world. Now therefore, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby declare April 2023 as parliamentary law month this 18th day of April 2023, Mayor.
Well, and I'm a part of the Apollo 11 unit of Brevard County National Association of Parliamentarians. We were chartered directly by the National Association of Parliamentarians. General Henry Martin, or Henry Roberts actually started writing his book of rules because he had to chair a committee. And he said it was the most abysmal situation he was ever in. After he started doing research, it took him only nine months to come out with his first set of rules by 1912. It had been revised four times. The National Association of Parliamentarians was actually founded in 1930, but it wasn't until 1953 that they adopted Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, current edition, as their rules. By that time, the Henry Martin III was also part of the family. The family kept on revising Robert's Rules. Henry Martin III became a member of National Association of Parliamentarians and was a member through the Maryland State Association of Parliamentarians and was made an honorary president of National Association of Parliamentarians before he died in 2019. We continue to work with the Robert's Rules of Order. Just a few tips about the 12th edition. By the way, the 13th edition is now being worked on. The 12th edition was written in the format it is in because it is now used primarily on tablets, Kindles, and computers. Therefore, when, when professional parliamentarians cite Robert's Rules, they cite by section number and paragraph number. No longer do they do page number and line number. So, you'll see now all citations based on section number and paragraph number. In order to be called a parliamentarian by the ethics of the National Association of Parliamentarians, you not only have to take an examination and join National Association of Parliamentarians, but you have to take an examination to be a registered parliamentarian. That's when you call yourself a parliamentarian. And then you can take another examination, be a professionally registered parliamentarian, and those are the ones that actually can ask the big bucks for the hours that they do. They usually help large conventions and also will step in and help groups when they have problems with their parliamentary procedure. So, I thank you very much on behalf of Florida Association of Parliamentarians, National Association of Parliamentarians, and Apollo 11, who is the Brevard County unit. And we do have a display in the library until the end of April if you want to get in there and see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next presentation that we have here today is for Arbor Day. Do we have representative here to help receive? Todd?
Be happy to, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is an official proclamation, city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, and fuel for our fire, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community and our source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Cape Canaveral is celebrating its 34th year as a recognized tree city. Now therefore, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Cape Canaveral, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Okay. My name is Matt Kennard. I'm the urban forestry partnership coordinator for the Florida Forest Service. I'd just like to thank the city of Cape Canaveral for inviting me to accept their proclamation and their recognition of the importance of trees and their urban forest. And we continue to want to work with y'all in the future and partner with y'all. We have many grants that can help build the urban forest and do many projects. So, with that, I wish you luck on your Arbor Day celebration, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's our pleasure to introduce Tim Davis, the city arborist. Tim has been with us for 27 years. And his manager is here to say a couple of words. Dave Colter.
Yeah, Dave. Good evening. This is a great opportunity to recognize Tim's work in the city here over the past 27 years. For 34 years, we've been a tree city, but for 27 of them, Tim has been our arborist. And he's, he's done a great service to the city here. On day-to-day basis, he deals with trees in one way or another. It's, it, there's, there's many different facets to the job. The duties would include obstruction trimming, right-of-way clearance trimming, moving and transplantation of trees. And he deals with the safety concerns such as broken limb damage and unfortunately occasionally the odd removal, which he's not happy about. He doesn't like removing trees. It's always the last page in his playbook, so to speak. He works hand-in-hand with code enforcement about trees that are on private property, designating which trees are specimen trees and which trees are invasive species. This helps in saving the overall city canopy coverage and helps prevent unauthorized tree removals within the city. He also, besides that, does a lot of other IM stuff. As far as tree stuff goes, he teaches the safety, chainsaw safety course annually to all our staff members who are interested in being involved in it. And we try to cross-train as many people as possible with that because of hurricanes. You never know when you're going to need them. Some of the stats for trees in the city. We prune over 2,000 trees in the city throughout the year. The Cape Canaveral city parks contain 830 trees. Manatee Sanctuary Park contains 309 trees, all of which Tim has either planted or transplanted himself. He's a professional. He's courteous with residents and staff and has contributed immeasurably to the beauty, enjoyability, sustainability, and resilience of the city of Cape Canaveral. He's left and continues to leave an incredible legacy that will be enjoyed by Cape Canaveral residents and visitors alike for many generations to come. On behalf of the city, I'd like to thank Tim, our arborist.
Wow. You guys embarrass me now. Well, all this I really couldn't do without, you know, Public Works. Way back in the day, it was the street department. You know, Capeview kids, sometimes volunteers. You know, so it wasn't just me out there planting them, you know? But I'm pretty proud of what we've accomplished, you know? Because if, you know, I don't know if everybody's from here, but if you've seen a lot of old pictures, you know, in the late 50s, early 60s, you know, we really didn't have a lot of canopy here, you know? So, and now, you know, we've done leads, you know, really. And we're constantly planting every year. So, I'm humbled and flattered, you know? And, well, and hopefully I can just keep doing what I'm doing.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. I just want to thank you. You're, you're always very approachable, easy to talk to. You love this city and the whole department, hats off. But I have to ask, what's your favorite tree in the city? Do you have one?
I don't know. There's a couple of them. Probably Patriots Park. That's probably two of our oldest ones.
Some of them.
You know, the one's been on the ground for a while, but it's still living, you know? And the kids like to climb on it. There's a few other, most of them in private areas, you know, on the trailer parks. There's some big ones. It's, it's like the old saying, you know? If you find an occupation you love, if you find a good place to work, and you know, you're surrounded by good coworkers, so it makes, you know, rewarding and easy to come to work.
Mayor, I would-
This has flew pretty fast in 27 years.
I would just like to add-
You go from noon and day, I said, you sure you guys don't want to wait three more years? Let's do it with 30. But here again, I'm, I'm very thankful, you know?
Mayor, I would just like to add that Dave and Tim and the department have saved the city a lot of money over the years. They planted the city hall landscaping. They're currently in the process of planning the Cape Center landscaping. It's looking fantastic. Knowing what's going in the ground and how to prepare it, how to maintain it, saves us so much money. And thank you guys for all your efforts. It's beautiful.
I would just also like to add, both for the council's knowledge and anybody present that is a resident of Cape Canaveral, to celebrate both Earth Day and Arbor Day, the city of Cape Canaveral is hosting a free tree giveaway for interested residents. The city will be distributing 40 Florida native trees on Tuesday, April 25th, on a first-come, first-served basis via a drive slash bike slash walk-through event in the parking lot of Manatee Sanctuary Park from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM or until supplies last. You must be a Cape Canaveral resident to acquire a tree and must show proof of residence upon arrival at the event, so either a driver's license or a bill. Species available on a first-come, first-served basis are southern live oak. We have 10 of those in one and three gallon pots. We have Dahoon Hawley, and we have 20 of those in one gallon pots, and we have 10 mahogany's in one gallon pots. So, they will stick trees, but one day they'll grow up big and tall. Trees, and just so everyone's aware, trees are not to be planted in the right-of-way. Thank you. And there will only be one available per household. So, please join us. We'd like to get rid of these trees, and they came free to the city. So, let's get some more trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Okay. This time, we're going to move to the public participation portion of the meeting. I do have a few speaker cards here. For those of you who are listening at home, we ask that you please raise your hand. I will be able to see that and give you an opportunity to speak. I'll unmute you. We have three minutes. The lights in front of us, when it goes green, the timer starts. At yellow, there's about 30 seconds left. And obviously, at red, we ask that you please wrap it up. The agenda, some of you selected to speak on a specific agenda item. If you wanted to wait till that item came up, please just let me know. The first one I have here is Bob Levine. Bob Levine? Hey, Bob. Please. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and giving me the opportunity to speak. I have two quick subjects to talk about on my cards. One is just code enforcement. I just think they can do a much better job than they do. On my street where I live, Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln needs some serious attention for the parking, that's on the off-road parking on the medians, chemicals in driveways, and it just, it really looks like heck. And I really think that code enforcement can do a much better job policing the area. I get to look out every day from my balcony, and I look across to the restaurants up on the corner, and I, of course, get to see their backside. And they've got open dumpsters there. Fortunately, the dumpster is there because I complained enough about it, and they brought one in. But the dumpsters are open and loaded. There's old appliances out in the back. And it's really nice to sit on your patio, on your balcony, and look out there and look at that. I think if they need to be removed, they need, they need to be out of there. And I think that code enforcement can do a little more for that issue. And that's all I have to really say on that. Next, I hope I'm not the only one here who wants to talk about Airbnbs, because they're not a favorite with my wife and I and my family. We have one that moved in next door to my townhouse, and the mayor has been, been there. He has seen it. The owners, they're, they're owners, but they're investors. They're not residents. They would be great residents, but they don't live there. Spring break was pure hell at my house. Next-door neighbors over there, the noise coming through the walls at our house, my wife, who would never get up and raise her voice to anybody, did. She had a bang on the wall repeatedly to get them to hold it down. It was only 18 people next door. It's not like they were having a party next door. It was wild. And we went up on the balcony to look down, and the first thing was, hey, come on over, have a beer with us. And I just told them, I said, no, no. It's after 10:30. I said, there's a curfew here, and you all need to knock this off. And a couple of them started to get a little mouthy. And I just told them the next time I hear anything, I said, I just dial three numbers, 911. And another smart aleck had to fire back. But his friend got the, got the gist, and they stopped, and they moved out of the area. I went out of town, so the next day, my wife had the pleasure of new tenants that were staying in. Being that we're in a commercial area, people don't, they can lease it to people within seven days, multiple. You could be out there for three days, and you could go off, and somebody else could come in and stay. And it's really, it's outrageous. We've been there for 10 years, and I don't know what we're going to do. I mean, this is like, we're being driven out because the Airbnbs are taking over this community. And something needs to be done about it. I'd also like to see some laws. Is that it for me?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I think I said enough about it, but Airbnbs, we need some policing and control on them because it's just out of control. And the city is doing more for the Airbnbs, I think, than the residents. And that needs to change because we're the ones that vote, and we're the ones that replace people if we have to. And things need to be, things have to change. They really do. Living near, it's pure hell.
Thank you.
It really is.
Thank you.
Two, three o'clock in the morning?
I've got notes. I'll follow up, and we'll coordinate with staff. Thank you, Bob.
I've sent you the audio tape that you heard.
Yes, sir. I did receive that. Thank you. Thank you. Next one I have is Mr. John Benton. Brad Purvell. Hey, Brad. Well, it looks like you, I don't know. Whatever one-
I'll start with ethnic.
You choose.
Please pass this around.
Can we hand it? To our Sergeant Arms.
Hi, my name's Brad Purvell. I live in the blighted area of Cape Canaveral next to the multi-generational building. I'm going to talk about ethnic intimidation that happened about three weeks ago in our community. These packets were found in the streets, on people's driveways between McKinley, Monroe, and Orange to Ridgewood. The people that are passing out these packets, they're passing out a disease. That disease is called hate. Another resident that same day, that Sunday, went to Brevard County Sheriff's Office here in Cape Canaveral. She was told, that's just freedom of speech. And it could be spring breakers. It's not spring breakers. When you look at that, there's organizations there. They reference the Bible. It is anti-Semitic. They reference the Bible and say Jews are the devil. They have representatives in the Senate with the star of David on their forehead as a rifle shot. Sorry. So, if that's freedom of speech, let me ask everyone here, and I don't mean to offend anyone, but can I take flower and write three K's on your lawn? And then when you water it in to get rid of the three K's, the grass grows greener, and it's there all the time? That's ethnic intimidation. I went, Councilman Willis, I went to the cops with coffee and donuts, and I discussed this with them. They have had 20 complaints about this or more. They have a picture of the automobile, but not the license tag. However, no one ever took fingerprints from the flyers. Thanks to Councilman's efforts, believe it or not, I got a call from the FBI that same day. It was very disappointing. The best that he said that they can do if they catch this guy is littering. That's disgusting, really. They did say that in Cocoa Beach, Merritt Island, Orlando, South Florida, these things happen and have happened. But I don't live there. I live in Cape Canaveral. And there's no room for that in Cape Canaveral. There's no tolerance for any type of hatred. Here's some facts for y'all. In the United States, the Jewish population is 2.4% of the total population of the United States. However, 55% of all religious hate crimes are against the Jews. You want to know what ethnic intimidation is? It is the acts, sorry, it is the acts of malicious and intentional intimidation or harassment of another person of race, color, religion, gender, or national origin. What can our city do? And I'll be very quick, guys.
Brad, if you don't mind, I'd like to, because we've, we get loose. Do y'all mind, how much time do you need?
I got one more page. That's it. 30 seconds.
30 seconds, council? Are we okay? I'd rather do it with that. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
What the city, what I believe the city of Cape Canaveral can do is issue an unequivocal condemnation of hate. Anti-Semitism is not just a Jewish problem, but it is an assault on our American values and our American culture. We need to depoliticize the fight against hate. Bipartisanship is critical to the American success countering hatred against Jews and other creeds in our city, in our county, and in the United States. I encourage our city to encourage reporting of hate crimes and encourage the reporting of the hate crimes to our Brevard County Service, Sheriff's Department, so they can report it to the FBI. There's over 250,000 hate crimes in the United States, and that's only a portion because that's all that's recorded. So, I would like to work with the city. If you can come up with some type of program to teach children, to get our little league, to get our elementary school, to get the American Legion, the VFW, and get together and put a project together against anti-hate. Thank you for-
Can I make a comment?
I've been discriminated against, just so you all know, okay? When I was a child, when I was a freshman in high school.
Hey, Brad.
I'm done.
We've got to draw the line at some point. We take this situation very seriously. I am aware of it firsthand, and thank you for your comments. I, I look forward to working with everyone who's, I believe, already involved to help. So, thank you.
Excuse me, can I make a comment?
Yes.
We already have an anti-hate proclamation. And I think that Lisa Day, if you contact Lisa, she will be glad to share it with you. We have it framed, and I have brought it to council several times. And I do agree with you 100%. I did teach class when I taught in international programs, and I did a lot of orientation about the same subject. So, I'm fully aware, and this should not occur. I agree with you. Thank you very much for bringing this up again. It's a very important issue. Oh.
Okay, council, any further comments on this one? Okay. Looks like I have a couple of cards. Kim Razanka? You want to hold till five? That's what I figured. Thank you. Andrea Shaking?
Thank you for your patience, everybody. And it's nice to be back here with you all. It's been a while. It's nice to see you. I'm here to talk about my concern, my long concern over the intersection at Buchanan and Orange Avenue. You know, the Buchanan ends at the end of the street on A1A at the traffic light. And I, I'm on the intersection, and also I speak on behalf of the other folks who are at the intersection. If you want their names, I can give them to you. Otherwise, you know, maybe privately. But at least once a day, at least once a day, I observe cars that start from Ridgewood and they're accelerating to the point where they fly through our intersection. We have tourists, we have school kids who walk Orange Avenue because, obviously, they're walking to school and home. Mostly it's in the afternoon when they're walking home. That's when it seems like there's most traffic. Um, we have, some of you probably remember Joy Salamon. She was a former mayor here in Cape Canaveral. She lives across the street from me. She has grandchildren, great-grandchildren, little beady ones and another one on the way. Her grandson takes the child out on the bike with one of those little sidecars that you sometimes see pets in. And I cringe. I worry because somebody can come along and just slam right into them. And that's how fast they're going. Uh, dog walkers, bicyclists, moms with carriages, people going to the beach, children on motorboards and electric scooters, uh, school pedestrians. I don't, I, I'm asking you for help before something horrible happens. It's not for me. It's not for me. I don't have little ones. I don't have pets. But I see my neighborhood and my neighborhood is busy with pedestrians, et cetera. And you have these knuckleheads who don't pay attention to the stop signs. And I'll dare say that they probably blow through Point Setia too, on their way up to catch that light. We need to do something and I, and some of the things I would suggest, speed bumps. Nice, easy speed bumps so that when they, when they are approaching that intersection, they know. That's number one. Another option would be to put strobe lights around the stop signs like we have on North Atlantic Avenue. Very effective, very effective. Solar powered. They wouldn't cost the city a lot of money. Okay? And, um, I mean, if all that fails, how about a flashing red light? But something, anything, please. We really need to protect those innocent people that are using that intersection from people who don't care. So anyway, that's my, that's my plea, my fervent plea. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a comment on that Buchanan, obviously a road that you travel, Center Street along A1A. I know that Commander Keck had sat out and worked with Todd on, on the A1A portion of it. And tonight, we're going to be talking more about A1A. But in the same, um, I'd like to connect with someone who'd be best and discuss what's happening there. I think just the nature of that signal causes people to hit the gas. They're trying to beat the red light. It is a unique street from traffic control. I have got a lot of complaints and Andrea has been communicating it a while. And from your perspective, I think something about Buchanan needs some emphasis. The Presidential Streets Master Plan is obviously big, but similar to, we're kind of doing some expedited initiatives here. That was the thought if Council, um, supports.
Mayor, the way I see Andrea's comments is Buchanan is a collector of sorts because everybody's making their way from north and south to get there because they know there's a light there. Especially if they want to make a left-hand turn on A1A. So you get a high incidence of traffic volume there. That could be enough to justify perhaps doing some of these additional things like she's talking about. So we have a staff meeting tomorrow. I'll be talking with the Brevard County Sheriff's Office and my team about this and see if we can put our heads together collectively to do something about all of the intersections on Buchanan. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. Council, anything else on that one? I know I spoke. I'm going to make sure you're good. Okay. I have, John, are you ready, Mr. Benton?
Okay, I'm here for my code reduction hearing and you guys know you owe it to me. You didn't let me defend myself in the code reduction hearing. After Kevin Mann, the deacon up here, and I'm glad this guy was in here about racism because the deacon and Presbyterian church came in and lied. You guys didn't do anything about it under oath. Said that I lived in a warehouse and I had a cop in the unit next to me. And I'm not going to live in a warehouse and rent my other unit to a cop. You've had a case going on for 21, 20 years. This has been going on nine years. Give me my code reduction hearing. Five board members, a lawyer, his lawyer, and the code enforcement member was sitting there laughing at me because they thought I was homeless. That's disgusting, man. That's racism. We have a law at that time. You don't do that to homeless people on the street, much less bring me into your meeting. You let Kevin Mann defend, let me defend what he said about me. It's like he came in, here's the deacon coming in from heaven, from heaven on a, on a cloud or something. Well, I want to read an email from his renters that called the city screaming at you guys and I was living in the warehouse. This is his email to me. I don't know the guy. Still, to this day, I don't know him. Hey Benton, if I see you around spaceman storage units again, you won't like the outcome. You have been warned. I don't know this guy, man. I'm calling Kevin out for what he did. And this guy is sticking up for him. Here's another one from him. I looked you up. You are a child molester too. I guess it takes one to know one. You are a loser. Revenge is sweet. Now, the guy's name is Mike Fitzpatrick. Now, wherever he is, he's around here. That was his, that was Kevin Mann's foot soldier, along with Brenda Loffus that mows that Morgan Manor up there, screaming at the phone. That's why you got no more anonymous complaints. You caused such a problem, Tallahassee had to get in here and not let you do that no more. Now, I sent you an email, Wes. I sent you a text message and I sent it to Mike Brown, two board members. You sent the cops to my house. Your phone number was on the website to call. And I wanted to identify, this is the guy that's calling you, your city, your city manager. I'm living in a warehouse. I'm going to read his, I'm going to read that text message. You tell the people who this guy is. You know who it is. The cops come to my house? All right. I say, cra, this is, this is back with the BLN when it started. Crazy for, I'm saying, this is crazy for Trump to stand out there with military force in front of a church. He says, those monkeys, John, they don't give a shit that that dead black guy.
John, we asked that you wrap it up.
Let me finish. Yeah, if you get that other guy a minute.
Understood, understood.
Look at the looney those fucking apes are doing on Fox News on New York. They are in it for the, they are in it for jackass shit and that's it. You should call these people out. They're in your community, man. They're calling you on the phone screaming, I'm living in a warehouse. Threatening me. I got a cop in my warehouse. I don't live in it.
Thank you, John.
You don't, like that bitch chased him off.
Okay. Brad, I do have another one for you. Was that on the, uh, this one says splash pad in City Park?
Yes.
Okay.
I won't drop any F-bombs. I live across the street from the, um, City Park and Splash Pad, so I see what goes on there. We have a $12 million beautiful facility. We have a half a million dollar splash pad. We have a $250,000 bathroom facility there. The problem is, most of our citizens work Monday through Friday. The bathrooms and Splash Pad is closed 50% of our weekends. It's closed on Sunday. We have kids going to Sandpiper Park. There's no place for them to use the restroom. The Splash Pad is closed and it's a half a million dollars. Why? Well, I can't tell you how many people I see carrying their chairs with their kids and towels going to the Splash Pad on Sunday. But why is it closed? Uh, we don't have personnel. We can't do this. It's not in the budget. We all have lawns with sprinklers and we all have swimming pools. They all have timers. We have a city sewage department. I'm sure they can add a timer to that equipment so it turns on on Sunday at X time or whatever. Or there's church services held in the city community center. Whoever opens up that building for the church could turn on the Splash Pad. Because I sure hope the church people don't have the super secret code on how to get into that $12 million facility. Secondly, it's funny, the arborists were here. The sprinklers do not work at that facility for the plants. Coincidentally, today, there was a backhoe and a pickup truck who dug out an evergreen tree. The labor to do that probably costs more than the evergreen tree costs to begin with. And what are they going to do with the other three or four dead trees? Because the sprinkler system does not work. I hope you got the plants at Home Depot because they have a one-year guarantee. Um, I do commend the city for buying that $1 million piece of property and tearing down that building and looking to the future on what you're going to build and plan there. But finish your job first. Get the sprinklers to work. Open up the Splash Pad for the kids in our city. Okay? And I encourage everyone, city management, elected officials, on your off time, just walk around the park, walk around this, uh, the area. Look at the trip hazards that are there with the broken irrigation pipes. I do know you received the pictures of the, the pump room of the Splash Pad open. And no one, just no one locked it. We even saw an employee of the building walk by it. The pumps were running. Didn't take the time. I know you get those emails. That gentleman makes a lot of sense who does it because he's trying to protect the city from lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, I have another one for you as well. Did you, or, I think you. Those were together, your comments? We asked that typically with two items that are not on the agenda, we limit those topics to one. Um, but I can verify. If there's anything that you, you feel that you need to address, please come forward that you didn't address earlier. And we asked that you come up and speak in, to the microphone, but for the sake of time, if you can keep it concise, we'd appreciate it.
I'm just coming back again to the Airbnb's. We have, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, 430 some odd Airbnb's in this two and a half miles city of Cape Canaveral?
I don't, we have a summary report at the back of the agenda that number changes, but I think you're in the ballpark.
Three to 350, at least. I mean, that's a lot of Airbnb's. And I don't know how many of you live next door to one. But let me tell you, it's not a field they live next door. It's ugly. It's ugly. Like, these kids come down and, and in their favor, pick them down.
Hey, Bob, I hate to interrupt you. Is this still on the Airbnb's? I think I, you just.
Lincoln Avenue and.
You had spoke about that earlier, though.
I think I combined them too, so.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure I have sidewalks, parking.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Did you cover that one?
That's the Lincoln Avenue.
Okay.
With cars parking on, on there and, uh.
And then the other one is Airbnb.
They're not supposed to be there, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to cut it short then? It's just the Airbnb.
I was making sure that you covered, covered your topics.
Okay.
If you need to go, please.
Yeah, just the, uh, the Airbnb's is, is the major for the, for the community. And I don't know if you live next door to one or right next to, but it's just, it's, you have no privacy in your house. The, the noise, the, the walls are rattling and the people don't care. They're making money. They're, they're investors. They don't care about you. And we need to do something, the, the board has to do something because it seems that there's better benefits for the Airbnb owners than the residents that live here. And it's, it's just, uh, some, something needs to be done. Or am I supposed to sell my place and move? Is that what it's all about? Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's not right. And they're getting everything. There's, there's no, a book that tells you what the Airbnb rights are. It, it seems, you know, the restrictions on them. And, uh, I, I can't say enough negative things about them, but you, you got my drift of what, what I'm getting at. And something needs to be done because as homeowners, um, we've lost our rights. You're sitting inside and your walls are shaking because these people are there and, uh, the owner's making money. These people are coming down to have a good time. They don't care about you next door. Something needs to be done. Thank you for your time. I apologize.
Thank you. You have a lot of folks that agree with you. And I, and I certainly understand the challenges. This council's taking short-term internals seriously, but we continue to monitor it. But thank you. The. Having a hard time read, uh, oh, is this Paul? Is this for the agenda item? Okay. You're going to hold, Mr. Googleman. I think I have Pat Campbell. That's for the agenda item number five as well? Okay, please. Thank you. Hey, Pat.
Patrick Campbell, 307 Surf Drive, Cape Canaveral. I had two items for, that are not on the agenda. Uh, the first one is, um, Todd and I have spoke briefly about perhaps an amnesty day for, uh, chemical turn-in, chemical disposal that we run in a city where residents could clean out their garages and clean out their crap and, and take it to a place like, like our waste treatment plant. And, uh, rather than take it over to the landfill, let the city get involved in that. So I'd like, I'd like the city council to consider that. Other cities do it. It's really an effective way. And it does eliminate people deciding, well, the landfill's too far. Just let me dump it over here. So I see that going on. Uh, the second one I really, I really struggle with. I'm an animal lover. Uh, I have a number of cats, as do my daughters. Uh, and so this one kind of hit home because I recognize it's not one animal at the, at the expense of another. But today, uh, in Cape Canaveral, and I think to a lesser extent in Cocoa Beach, we have coyotes that are killing people's pets. More than one, more than two, more than five, uh, both cats and dogs. So it doesn't matter whether you don't let the cat out, they won't get killed. It's dogs too. Um, and there are pictures floating around. And I did verify these are real pictures in Cape Canaveral. And I have spoken to two residents that live behind me on Lindsay Court, uh, who unfortunately had to come out to see the dog tore apart. Uh, something I hope the council can do is engage Florida Wildlife or do something to trap these animals and relocate them. They have no place being on the beach. Um, and the food sources are scarce enough, so they're going after the easy food and that's your pets. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, relevant, uh, I received a brochure that city staff is working on to distribute through outlets, Friday Fest or whatever avenues are best. But I encourage folks to, you know, follow the Facebook page or, um, do your own research. Uh, I can verify that they certainly are coyotes. Um, and it's happened directly to my father-in-law. And I think four or five pets have been lost, it seems like, over the last two weeks. So please be careful. Get your furry friends inside until we can do something. Um, and Todd, thank you for handling that issue to help bring awareness to the situation. And if there's any humane, uh, ways to relocate, and that's what the council wanted to talk about between now and the short future, uh, that's something I think the citizens would, would take seriously.
Yes, Mayor, we are looking into that and working with Florida Wildlife. But, uh, the important thing for residents to keep in mind is, yes, protect your pets, bring them inside. But also leaving food outside, um, people will leave their cat food outside. And sometimes people feed peacocks and whatnot. These things also attract them. So you want to leave the least desirable place to be your yard. Make, you don't want them. If people aren't feeding them and they're not leaving their pets out, they're going to have to move on. So there, there are things we can do.
Thank you. Okay, that, if I missed you, please, uh, raise your hand. I believe that's all the cards for now.
Did you check? Okay.
Here, I'm going online now to see. I've got one hand raised. This is, uh, Kristen Lorti. Kristen, we're going to go ahead and unmute you here. You'll have three minutes, but. Give me one second. Hey, Kristen.
Yes.
Yes, sorry about that. Thank you. We appreciate all the work you're doing in the county to help share best practices and taking notes over here and look forward to seeing those things improve. It takes a lot of courage and work out of the city staff, so thank you all for getting us this far and certainly the support of the council. Next one I have is Marco. Give me a second here, Marco. Should be able to hear you now. You are unmuted. Yes, you'll have three minutes. Thank you. Okay, that concludes any one who's participating and listening in online. Saw the public comment card, see, and no more hands. We'll go ahead and close the public participation portion of the meeting. Appreciate everyone taking time out of their day to come speak. This time we are at the consent agenda portion. We've got three items. If any item needs to be removed, now is the time, otherwise we'll look for a motion to adopt. Yes, well, we approve the...
Consent agenda.
No, we haven't done the consent agenda yet. The order of the agenda is what we did earlier. Just, do we want to change the order? This is, we're going to try to vote all three together unless we want to pull one off. Approve the minutes, resolution is number two, Community Appearance Board. I did want to talk about number three, but I think I can pass. Just the brief statement I would say on that is, how much are those? Let me pull it. It's important, and we'll move swiftly. I would like to pull item number three instead of trying to do that now, but if there's not any other items we want to pull, we can vote one and two through.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items one and two.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to approve agenda items one and two. Any more discussion? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Thank you. All right, one and two passed, 4-0. Item number three, my statement is, this agenda item, thank you so much for working on this. As I understand and speaking with Lexia Mia when we discussed it, is on the summary report, so if we go to the first page of the agenda summary, about three paragraphs down, given the continued increase in visitors, about middleway in the page of the, we're on agenda item number three. Yep, and so right before all the studies it lists here. So this is really the ask, if I understand it, it makes sense to me, is, hey, we've got an increase in visitors. We're also seeing some deaths, unfortunately, the other day. And the request is really four big things. Feasibility and safety studies, such as, and it breaks down a pedestrian safety and a pedestrian lighting study, then an advance on priority. For the proposed signal lies mid-block crossings. I think that's fantastic. And then a set of recommendations for interim safety improvements. That's great. And then additional studies and strategies for improved safety, access and feasibility. So there's two or three studies. We were talking about the cost of those. We've got the replenishment fund with $24,000. I'm 100% all-in for doing this, but FDOT would bear the cost of those studies.
Lexi, you want to speak to that?
If not, I envision the fund to be used for more tangible, but hey, if this is the next step, that's fine.
I can speak really briefly, and then I actually need to step out for a class.
Sure. Brief is perfect.
So that is something that we would need to negotiate with FDOT. They would reasonably carry the brunt of the cost for that. There may be some funding that we can put aside to maybe help advance that, depending on how their funding structure pulls down. At this time, we are looking at having a study on the list of priority projects through the TPO that's been drafted currently for approval that'll be brought to FDOT later on this year in the summer. And so that's, that funding is meant to be pulled down from state level to carry some of those, some of those planning study costs.
Thank you very much. The statement is, these studies are good. We've got our $24,000. I want to let the council know, be thinking, is that what we want to use the money for? Or do we want it to, you know, upgrade lights or make it more universal? Doesn't matter as much, but I really appreciate and at a minimum wanted to compliment the efforts that went into this. So thank you very much. That's all I had. Counsel? Any, you want to say something?
No, I don't have any questions for Lexi. She can take off if she needs to. But I envision a lot of that funding that we are putting aside, whatever we can't get around not using, trying to push forward FDOT to put in crosswalks. Maybe that funding could be used for those tangible efforts. If we, if we come to the table, and we're, Lexi and I are attending a meeting tomorrow with FDOT, if we come to the table with those funds, we are willing to put some money into it if you can help us get that resolved earlier rather than later. That's the way I would see using some of those funds or whatever we have available to us.
I love that. Yep. Counsel? This is good for direction to full steam ahead if that works for you on, which is really number two, an advance on priority on the proposed as an example. So, thank you.
Clear. Thank you.
And we're, Lexi and I tomorrow are going to go to FDOT and say, these are the things we want. Now, they won't agree to all of them, I'm sure, but we're going to ask anyway and push it.
Thank you for doing that and hope that was helpful. I think we're all on the same page. If there's not anything else, that was it. We can vote it through.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I move that we approve resolution number 2023-02.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, a second by Councilmember Davis.
That's the wrong item.
The motion is consent agenda, consent agenda item number three.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Should be, what did...
Can you restate the motion? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. It's not this resolution that's in with the path for item three.
It's basically, I think, I'll be looking for a motion to...
I'll make a motion, we approve consent agenda item three.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Any more discussion on this one? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Okay, counsel, we're at seven o'clock. We are now moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have one public hearing item. Is everyone doing okay? Want to knock this one out? Or, I know at seven we stop. Okay?
I'm good.
So this is a public hearing item for ordinance number 042023, and if our city attorney's ready?
Yes. Ordinance number 04-2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, updating construction standards related to the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP, and participation in the NFIP's community rating system, amending Chapter 90, Article 2, floodplain management, amending Chapter 82 Buildings and Building Regulations, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability in an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing item. There haven't been any changes since first reading. This ordinance updates the city's floodplain management provisions based on a recommendation that the city received from the Florida Office of Floodplain Management. These updates are necessary to improve the city's floodplain management in conjunction with the NFIP program. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I got a chance to look through this. I think this is all really good, especially with the amount of storms and flooding that we're seeing. So emphasis in those particular areas that we see devastated at times. We know where they are in Cape Canaveral. Do we have any questions for staff? If not, we'll go out to the public. Okay. We'll bring it back there before. This is a public hearing item. Anyone who'd like to speak, I'd go ahead and open public hearing. That goes for anyone who's participating at home. Come forward. Seeing no one there, I'm online. Now, I see one hand raised. This is for Kristen again. Kristen, if you do not intend to speak on this public hearing item, please remove your hand, but I will go ahead. Okay, I saw you removed your hand, assuming no one wants to speak on this online. And with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Back to the counsel. Counsel, if we're good, we can go ahead and move on.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 04-2023.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to adopt ordinance number 042023. Anything else? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance 042023 passes 4-0. This time, we're moving to the items for action. First one, we're on item number five, for those of you following along in our agenda. It's a conditional mediated settlement agreement related to the special magistrate proceeding under Section 7051. I'll go ahead and direct to our city manager. If there's anything that you want to say on this or anything...
I prefer to let Anthony lead on this one.
Introduce. Looking...
Okay, so what's before you is a conditional mediated settlement agreement related to a special magistrate proceeding under the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. If you recall, on December 20th, 2022, the council adopted resolution 2022-32 approving a development order denying Mr. DeChristopher and his wife's petition for a lot split application. However, the council also recognized in that development order that the two tax parcels owned by the DeChristers constitute a portion of the originally plotted Lot 21 in that particular subdivision and would be considered one developable lot for development permit purposes. Shortly after that development order was issued by the city council, the DeChristers filed the request for relief under the Land Use Environmental Dispute Act. As a result of that request for relief, it required the city and DeChristopher to agree to a special magistrate to handle the proceeding under the act. You know, the act is a statutory process. It's completely driven by the Florida statute, related Florida statute. The parties agreed that Paul Gugelman would serve as the special magistrate in that proceeding. I think everybody is familiar with Mr. Gugelman. I mean, his name is very renowned in municipal law circles, has served city attorney for several cities and has 40 years plus, I assume, of impeccable local government service. He served, so he's serving as the magistrate. Under the act, it first requires that the parties attempt to mediate a resolution of the dispute. So that was the first stage. The second stage is a more formal hearing, which would only be necessary if the parties didn't mediate a settlement. So we, the manager, Mr. Dickey and I, attended a mediation with the DeChristers and the special magistrate and ultimately came to an agreement regarding a conditional mediated settlement agreement. And that was facilitated by the special magistrate. In essence, the conditional mediated settlement agreement, if it was approved, would permit the DeChristers to process a modified lot split plan as well as several corresponding variance requests on the Chapter 98 of the city code. If this, if this agreement were approved, that request would follow the city's normal process, go to the Planning and Zoning Board, where the Planning and Zoning Board would consider this, the modified request, and then make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council ultimately has the final decision regarding whether or not the modified plan and variances would be approved under Chapter 98. So it is a conditional agreement. It's conditional because it requires the city council's approval this evening. If the city, if the agreement is approved by the council, then Mr. DeChristopher would have to, you know, file the necessary applications to have his modified plan heard by the Planning and Zoning Board and the council, and the variances heard by the, by the, by the Planning and Zoning Board and council. If this agreement is not approved by the city council this evening, then the special magistrate will conduct the formal hearing, the second stage of the, of the process under, under the, under the act. And that, that hearing would occur on July 28th, 2023, again, if council does not approve this agreement. If the council approves this agreement and the lot split... If the council approves this agreement and the lot split and variance requests are not approved by the city council, then the magistrate will conduct the formal hearing in December, on December 15th, 2023. If the council approves this agreement and then ultimately approves the modified lot split plan and variance request, then the process would end, and that would close the special magistrate proceedings under the statute. So, that's generally the highlights of the process. Again, it's a statutory process. We follow the statute to a T, and now this conditional agreement is before you, council's discretion whether or not you want to approve it. Mr. DeChristopher is here, represented by Attorney Kim Rosenka. Also, the special magistrate, Mr. Guglman, is sitting in the front row this evening. I think he may want to, you know, introduce himself to you as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. I leave it to you now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Just one, just to be clear. If we approve this tonight, it will come back to us again.
Yes, it would come back before the council.
All right. Thank you. Now, I do got two cards. Would it be best to go out to those now or... It's fine. I got a total of three. If there's not any more questions, I've got a few more, but it's... Yes, we'll bring it back. If those, Kim or Paul, both your cards, did you intend to speak during this item?
Good evening. For the record, Paul Guglman, I'm honored to be here and honored to serve as your special magistrate in this case. I am here still acting, the magistrate process, as your attorney has outlined to you, is a two-step process. The first step of the process that we're still in is basically a mediation process. For those of you that are old enough and remember Henry Kissinger, it basically is a typical Henry Kissinger process. The magistrate attempts to mediate a solution, working between the two parties, and coming up with hopefully a solution. Sometimes that happens, and sometimes it doesn't. In this case, you're being presented with a solution. As your attorney has indicated to you, if you do not approve the settlement agreement, which has been mediated by the two parties, then we will go on to a hearing on the matter. And they'll be, I'll be acting in more of a judiciary type of role than as a mediator, and will issue an opinion. And if either party doesn't like that, there's always court. I would like to urge your consideration of the settlement agreement, and let me tell you why. First of all, I don't have a dog in this hunt as far as the solution to this situation. But given the years that I've spent in local government, I've learned that it is better for individual parties, a local government and somebody that's unhappy with a decision by local government, to try to work it out rather than go to court, for two reasons. Number one, you go to court, you're spending a lot of money. It's taxpayers' money, and it's individuals' money, and most people I've found when they go to court think they're going to win some sort of resounding victory, and a lot of times, they don't get the resounding victory. Sometimes the judge splits the baby. Sometimes the judge goes against you. In the meantime, you're shelling out huge amounts of money in litigation. The second part of going to court is the judge, in a very, very short period of time, gets exposed to a case that you and the other parties to the litigation have lived probably for years. To expect a judge to be able to absorb everything that you've absorbed over a period of a couple of years, allow that judge to absorb it in a very short period of time, sometimes it's humanly possible. A lot of times, you don't get quite the result that you're hoping for. The bottom line of this whole thing is if the city and Mr. DeChristopher can work out their differences, short of going to court, or short of going to a formal hearing with me, the better off for everybody because you'll have more control over what the solution is. You'll have an opportunity to help fashion, meld, if you will, what that solution is. So, it has nothing to do with this particular case, just as a general rule, I would recommend to litigants, if you can put together a settlement agreement that maybe isn't everything that you want, you should give strong consideration to it. The second point I would make to you is that, as Mr. Garganese indicated, we follow the statute to a T. Unfortunately, under state law, I am not able to comment to you about the ins and outs of the mediation, and that is statutory prohibition. I can tell you, though, as a whole, that I want to issue a couple of compliments, having done a couple of these types of hearings over the years. First of all, I want to thank Mr. DeChristopher for being flexible and forthright. I want to thank your negotiating team, Mr. Dickey, Mr. Morley, Mr. Garganese, for not only professionalism, but for doing a good job of advocating their client, the City of Cape Canaveral's position in this thing, and being very clear on it. You had extremely good representation, and the city can be really proud of the people you had involved. That having been said, to the extent that I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to. A lot of questions that you might have, because of judicial ethics, I may not be able to answer. So, thank you. But I do urge your consideration of the settlement.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I'm good.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Kim Rosenka. I'm here on behalf of the DeChristers, and I'm here because of the continuing opposition of the neighbors. As you may recall from the facts, when we were here in December, five years ago, Mr. DeChristopher bought two lots of record in the city that were established in 1984. He bought them for $420,000, believing he had two buildable lots. These lots of record have been depicted for years on your official zoning maps and meet the minimum requirements of R1 low-density residential district. He had every reason to believe that these were, in fact, buildable lots. Four years ago, he was told by city staff he had two lots of record, but there was a possibility they were illegally subdivided. Three years ago, he was told that staff recognized there existed multiple of illegally subdivided lots in the city, and they were working to resolve that by an ordinance, ordinance 11-2021. Two years ago, city council did not act on that ordinance, and city staff directed Mr. Christopher to formally submit the lot split applications and after the fact lot split to try to remedy the situation. A year ago, city staff recommended to P&amp;Z and to city council to approve the lot split, and P&amp;Z did indeed unanimously approve the lot split. The resident, Mr. Patrick Campbell, argued to council that they could not do this because of ordinance 9831 and 9866. Both of these ordinance came after the 1984 subdivision of these two lots. So, the hardship that was created was by the city enacting new ordinances, not by Mr. DeChristopher purchasing two lots. Mr. Campbell has made a statement that Mr. DeChristopher is an expert in real estate and should have known that these were illegally subdivided. Well, city staff didn't really know they were illegally subdivided, and he did rely on Vincent Keenan, a Realtor who told them there were two buildable lots. Mr. DeChristopher has filed code violations on all of these illegal subdivided lots, most of which that are built upon already, and it's all in the same area. It's the same old plat. To date, there's no correspondence from the city as to what's going on with those 30 code violations. Interestingly or not, Mr. Hakama, Marco Hakama, who lives at 315 East Central Boulevard, also lives in an illegal subdivided lot when you look at his deed. It's a split of two other lots from the same plat, and he has a built house on that. As to the availability of a variance for a lot width, the code provides lots can be reduced in width up to 20%. Your attorney and staff would not recommend something to you that couldn't be done. So, Mr. Campbell's saying you can't do the variance is not correct. Again, there are several lots in the subdivision that do not meet this requirement of lot width. 216 Circle Drive has a 60-foot width and has a house on it. 220 Circle Drive is a 55-foot width lot. 226 is a 70-foot wide lot, and 230 is a 71-foot wide lot. Mr. DeChristopher has waited a long time to build on these, since he purchased them in 2018. He intends to build one house for himself and one for his brother. He has shown throughout that he is willing to work with the city. He's spent a lot of time. He's shown patience and resources, and he does intend to see this all the way through. We request the council approve this conditional mediated agreement, and believe the city's tax resources are better spent on more important things than legal fees, and continue on with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions this time? Thank you. You have, Mr. Campbell, did you... You spoke about a different matter earlier. I know that...
I...
Okay. Thank you.
So, I did submit, Patrick Campbell, 307, sir, try. I did submit a written statement, I don't know, Sunday night or something, to all members of the council, voicing, essentially documenting my previous objections to this lot split. So, I just want to point out a couple of things. The first thing I want to point out is the respondent's response, responded being the City of Cape Canaveral and the city attorney, response to the request for relief, contains a number of very profound and correct statements. One of them that's very profound and correct is, the duty of the council is to follow the law. I've tried to bring nothing forward on this opposition but things that were supported by case law, or things that were supported by Florida statute, or supported by the City of Cape Canaveral ordinances. I've made the statement before that our ordinances are not suggestions. They are to be followed. The city attorney has confirmed that with your duty is to follow the law. This is not a lot split, and there has been a lot split. It does not fit the requirement to be a lot split. That doesn't mean there's not an avenue for the landowner to come forward and do something with the property that they own. It's not a taking. It's there. He still has it. But it does put into question how any of this got started, when the very beginning was a lot split, and it does not constitute a lot split. I had asked, all the way back to planning and zoning, what lot is being split? And that's not been forthcoming. The attorney made the statement that a variance was allowed. If I'm wrong on that, I will go back and find that, but I do not believe that a variance for lot width is allowed by code, because what I found is this was addressed for a similar property on East Central in 2013. Planning and zoning, you know, recognized that the code, as it was written, could not allow the variance on lot width. The individual that was requesting it wanted to take a single lot and split it and build two homes. Essentially, the same thing is happening here. The planning and zoning sent it to council to approve, adding the words that would allow the width to get a variance for the width. David Dickey, the city manager at that time, intercepted that and put out a memo that essentially, we need to do a comprehensive review, this is in 2013, do a comprehensive review, and I'll use the words in the letter, to get this right. As far as I can see, and what I've looked at, the words that were in question at that time were not changed. So, that tells me that it was reviewed and the words weren't changed because they're right. And they're right because it protects the homeowner, people like me that bought, assuming that R1 meant something, and what it meant was in the statutes, and that that was my protection against what Mr. DeChristopher is trying to do. So, it's not a lot split. I don't believe you can do a variance. The word hardship is in the agenda item. This does not fit a hardship variance at all, and the case law is absolutely sound on what constitutes a hardship. Mr. DeChristopher brought this on himself, so it does not apply. I'll point out that if you don't approve this, all that happens is we get to have this discussion in a public venue, so we can bring out everything that went on with this. So, that's what I'm asking you to do, is not approve it, let it go ahead and follow the process. And I would like to caution you on believing that the cost of the property is a factor. And I'd also now like to caution you that the esteemed attorney talking about, hey, if you don't do this, it's going to cost you a lot of money in legal fees, you know, I find that to be a little bit offensive. You should be working on the law, not avoiding defending your position. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a hand raised on this topic. I just want to confirm that, Marco, if it is your intention to have your hand raised for item number five, please keep it up. If not, I will go ahead and unmute you. Okay, just give me a second. Oh, there we go. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's all the public comment cards. If you filled one out and you intended to speak on this, please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing that, council, we're going to go ahead and bring it back here.
All right. I, I'd like to speak now.
Thank you.
All right. I have several things to say about this. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Guglman. Highly respected and admired you for a long time. I've sat on Space Coast League of Cities for six years, so I really understand the work that you've done, and I've wrestled with this personally. And I just want to point out a few things. I've done a lot of homework on this case, and I do understand what a legal hardship is. And I, as I said, and anyone can look it up, Google it.
Point of order. Can I, can I just give you a little legal advice?
Yes, sir.
Before you comment, maybe I should have done that at the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's before the, the council is a conditional settlement agreement. If this agreement is approved, all it does is it permits Mr. DeChristopher to submit the requisite application for the modified plan seeking and seeking variances. I would advise the city council not to discuss the merits of a variance. I would advise the city council not to discuss whether or not you think there's a hardship or not. If this agreement is approved, the burden is going to then shift to Mr. DeChristopher to file the applications, go to the planning and zoning board and argue his case, his application. And that's eventually going to come back before the city council. The reason why I give you this advice, because I don't want to see any of you prejudice yourself and then be disqualified from the hearing that would occur if you approve this agreement. So what's really at issue is discuss the merits of the agreement, not the merits of whether or not he would be entitled to a lot split based on the modified plan slash variances.
Are we allowed to ask your definition of a legal hardship?
The definition of hardship is set forth in the criteria in chapter ninety-eight of the code. That criteria would be applied. Again, it would be Mr. DeChristopher's burden to present his evidence and testimony that there is a hardship, and that would be for the planning and zoning board to wrestle with as well as the council. And I, I can't say without, you know, listening to the evidence whether or not he would have a case or not. Again, this, this, this conditional agreement, if approved, allows him to proceed to process an application, and, you know, we'll see where it leads. I don't want to say any more than that.
Can I work off that? And so, and Mayor Bertin, any of you obviously have the floor. I mean, I'm just going to jump in. So the, going back to the, I guess, the risk of disqualifying, can you explain from the public hearing, we would disqualify ourselves at the public hearing? It would not be conducted by the magistrate?
Okay. If this, if this, if this is approved, this agreement is approved, Mr. DeChristopher then would have thirty days to submit his application for the variances and, and the modified plan. And then that application would go through the city's normal process. All of the code provisions and criteria would apply to that application request. And then the council would have to make a decision. And the council would be serving in, as you know, a quasi judicial capacity, the same capacity you served in back in December when you issued the previous development order. And when you serve in a quasi judicial capacity, you have to be impartial, unbiased, okay? You, you render your decision on this application based on all the evidence that's going to be presented to you, right? Just like you did back in December of last year. Now, the other aspect of this is if you don't approve the agreement or you consider, you approve the agreement and you consider the new application and you deny it, then the matter goes to the special magistrate. And the special magistrate would have an evidentiary hearing, and he will determine whether or not your decision is fair and reasonable and doesn't unduly burden Mr. DeChristopher's property. And he would then consider about eight criteria in the statute to make that recommendation to you, whether or not it's unfair, unduly burdensome on Mr. DeChristopher. And then that recommendation would come back to the, to the council. But again, only if you don't approve this agreement or you approve this agreement and deny the, the new application for the lot split and variance. So, you know, there's two processes going on here, Mayor. The council serving in a quasi judicial capacity, and if necessary, the magistrate serving in the magistrate capacity under the Land Use Dispute Act, applying criteria of whether or not your decisions or decision is unfair, unreasonable, and unduly burdens Mr. DeChristopher's property. And then, you know, if you have that special magistrate recommendation, you would then consider his recommendation ultimately, and ultimately decide whether you want to make modifications or adjustments to your previous decision to try to address issues that may, that may, the magistrate may have to address. And that goes to why Mr. Guglman says, you know, in terms of judicial ethics, he, so he's limited to what he can say because he ultimately may conduct his own evidentiary hearing and apply criteria, you know, in an impartial, fair manner to render a recommendation, a written recommendation to you all, if necessary. So this is sort of like, this, this Land Use Dispute Act is seldom, is seldom used, but when it's used, think of it as a off-ramp with an on-ramp. It takes you off, gets you off the, off the highway, and you go through this process, and ultimately you have to get back on the highway and, you know, ultimately you make the final decision. And sometimes you may end up going back off the highway and then coming back on the highway, but ultimately it comes back to you all to make a final decision. The magistrate's the off-ramp, tries to mediate first, attempts to mediate a possible solution for you all to consider. If mediation doesn't work, then he serves in a different capacity, puts on a completely different hat.
All right. So are you saying that we cannot say anything about?
I wouldn't discuss the merits.
About land use or zoning or anything like that? I just want to ask that question.
I mean, in general, but not to, I wouldn't speak to the merits of, of, of the modified application and variance that potentially could come before you if you approve this agreement tonight. But you, you can speak in general terms.
The merits of the agreement, though, is where you do think we should.
You can talk about the merits of the agreement, but don't dig deep into the merits of the variance requests.
I understand.
And the, and the modified plan. That's for another day. Question to you is, the merits is, do you want to afford Mr. DeChristopher an opportunity to have the modified plan heard and his variance requests heard before you, you know, render ultimately a final decision? Keeping in mind, if you, just if you recall back in December when you rendered the order, there were no variance requests pending. It was a straight-up application. So this would give Mr. DeChristopher the opportunity to present his variance, variance request in his, in his argument that there's a hardship. I don't know whether or not at the end of the day, there's a legal hardship or not. That decision's ultimately going to be made, be made by you based on evidence and criteria.
Yeah, so there's no path that, that in, in the event it, it comes back to us, right? I mean, if I understand this, if we approve, he's going to have to go through the zoning application or the, I'm sorry, the lot split application or whatever the procedure is, right?
Adjustments?
The standard procedures, and that's what's.
On the chapter ninety-eight.
Through the boards, the P and Z, and then back to us.
Correct.
The difference is the modified.
The modified plan.
Yes.
Plus several variance requests based on the modified plan would go to the P and Z board for consideration and then to the council.
So there's a lot of evidence here, and I know, thank you for explaining that. And for me, it seems that, and for the sake of time, unpacking some of the issues can be counterproductive for now because I, I think I need to wrap my head around some of the, the points that I made and what you talked about to ensure that I'm, I'm on track here. But what is the difference between this process? What, I guess, I, I don't understand, couldn't he go do that anyways? Why does he need us to approve this? And that was my thing.
I mean, I don't, I haven't looked at the code in great detail, but I don't believe, ultimately, at the end of the day, Mr. DeChristopher would not, would not be prohibited or would be prohibited from filing a new application at a later date. But currently, we are in the Land Use Dispute Act process, and as I said, this agreement simply gives Mr. DeChristopher the opportunity to present the modified plan plus several variance requests for consideration, which is a modified, it's a modified application from his original application, which was decided by the council in December. So it, so if you don't give him this opportunity, Mayor, then we're going to go to the magistrate and have a big evidentiary hearing. We'll argue our case. We'll argue strenuously that the development order was fair, was reasonable, and didn't unduly burden his property for generally the reasons stated in our response to his request for, for relief. We're going to have to put on evidence. We're going to have to put in testimony, witnesses. Mr. DeChristopher has a laundry list of witnesses that he's going to present to the magistrate if we have the hearing as well. And then the magistrate will, will, will make a recommendation and tell you whether he thinks, you know, you treated Mr. DeChristopher unfairly or, or, you know, unreasonably, and then you all will have to consider it. So, I mean, and frankly, in essence, I mean, we, we cut to the chase if this settlement agreement is approved and he's, and he's given the opportunity to present the modified, the plan, lot split plan and his request for variances, which he could have submitted back in, you know, last year and had it heard in December, but he didn't.
Thank you. I would like to take a ten-minute break. I need to run to the restroom and then also want to swing back and I want, I have a technical question for you, which I'm happy to put on the record. But Counsel, are we okay with taking ten minutes at this time? That's a good stopping point for me in the process, some of the things we just discussed. So it is seven forty-three PM. I will start back here at seven, seven, let's call it seven fifty-five. We'll start back here at 7, let's call it 7:55. Thank you for your patience on that. If we're ready, go ahead and call the meeting back to order here. It's 8:01 PM. We were on agenda number five, agenda item number five. We're working through some technical questions. And now we're back to the council here. Councilor, Mayor Tim Raymond, I believe you were asking some questions. I've got a couple more things, but if you...
I think that it's best to not ask those questions right now.
Okay.
And when you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to give a motion.
Okay. Let me just get, no matter what, and this will come back to us, and I know that gives us some comfort. But the other path, or the off-ramp, I guess you could say, allows us to have an evidentiary hearing through a trained professional, our magistrate. And then it comes back to us. And so that's where in my head I'm wrestling, why would we not take advantage of the evidentiary hearing? And because if I'm going to start unpacking this and working on it, there's a lot of questions. It's very difficult for me to approve this today without spending more time. And so for me, instead of going down the path without the evidence, I think we should take it and consider it. That is what I'm hearing, the difference in the two paths, is one of them comes with the benefit of having a hearing from our magistrate.
If the council doesn't approve this agreement, then the magistrate has the hearing. But the hearing is going to be based on the December 20th, 2022 development order issued by the city council. So he will examine whether that development order approved by the council in December is fair and reasonable and doesn't unduly burden Mr. DeChristopher's property. So that's, so if the council approves this agreement, on the other hand, and then ultimately denies the modified application and variances, we go back to the special magistrate and have a hearing regarding both the development order that was previously approved in December, plus the development order denying yet another request for a lot split made after this agreement was approved. So the magistrate then, you know, he considers the new development, the new development order issued by the council as well. So the magistrate's role is only to render a recommendation on the development order that the council approves. So if you don't approve this agreement tonight, then we'll have a hearing before the magistrate again on the December development order approved by the council.
And that hearing is, if it's not, if we don't, if we can't get through this in that scenario by May 5th, right, and we took no action, it would automatically go to the hearing?
Well, the council needs to take action by May 5th, one way or another, whether you're going to approve this or not. You need to make that decision.
I'm asking, what happens if we don't, if we can't get through it? Because that...
We can't get through what? Approval or denial of this conditional mediated settlement agreement?
Yes.
The magistrate's order requires us to, requires the council to make a decision by May 5th?
No, I think it says if it's not approved. And so what I'm saying is, we didn't...
Then it's denied.
We didn't...
That is, yeah, the council doesn't approve.
But I'm saying, we didn't deny it. We couldn't get through it. Is that date, the May 5th? Does the statute or the act talk about what happens? Because what I read, it wasn't specific to opposing or supporting. I think it said, you know, if not approved, or... But I get that, in both scenarios, would be not approving. But one of them is, we didn't oppose, we just couldn't get through a decision. And that's my issue, because I think the level of due diligence and detail and the evidence is what we need. And our special magistrate offers that. So I don't see the risk in going, both of them seem like, why wouldn't we deny this because a lack of evidence or not sufficient time to discover the evidence? I think that there have been points that's raised, the email that was sent, the email, the comments from Mr. Campbell. And these are some of the things that I think might be limited to speak on, but there are things in here that's just a matter of record and history, it's not an opinion, that I want to look more into. And I do not disagree with today. There are things on DeChristopher's side that I agree with and I understand. And so today, we've been here, we voted on this. The lot split application was denied. Right. And at that point, had we denied the lot split application and we didn't do a development order, what would Mr. DeChristopher have? Couldn't he have just went right back and applied for another lot split? Or go down the path he's going to go down today? That's what I think we should do, is deny it and let Mr. DeChristopher do what all this says. I don't know why we have to inject this step. I understand that the petition used in 7055 is based on the development order, but I don't think we're the right folks at this stage in the process to allow a wide net of pursuits, variance, hardships. There's a lot of issues in here in my head, and there's a lot of details that says, we're all agreeing it'll come back to council. But I'd rather oppose it today and allow that evidence to be worked through under our magistrate, and then council will have the benefit of that information before we vote and take his recommendation very seriously. So today, we don't have a lot. I see this path. I see this, and I think that this path works under certain circumstances, where you would go to mediation, you'd sort through some details, and then you would be able to avoid or come to a mediated settlement agreement. But under this circumstance, there's a lot in this agreement that I think we need to work through. I don't know if we can talk about it, but I'll just point out one, that I have a question, is the variance for a lot width? I believe the mediated settlement agreement proposes or wants to pursue a variance for that. Is that right?
That's correct.
Can we do, I mean, I don't know, can we do a variance for a lot width?
Chapter 98, the subdivision regulations, the division of land regulations, does permit a variance from the lot design requirements.
For a lot width, though?
Yeah.
Can we look at that? And I would like to pull that up and see that, because this is a good example of... Because this is a good example of something that's glaring, that's jumping out at me that we're approving today. And I would love to have our magistrate step in between my questions and hit Mr. DeChristopher's request. That's all I'm saying. I'd like our magistrate to step in at this time and answer some of these questions. And if I had, you know, enough time, we've spent a lot on this. I believe this council, and I know we've all spent time on it, but if you look through the questions and the points in here, I don't, I don't think it's wise for us to approve this today. And if anything, if we're insistent on taking action before the 5th, I'd be willing to come back and take it up. But today, I don't see the downside. And so that's one example, variance lot width. City attorney, you saying that's chapter 98?
Correct.
Can we, can I see that? Because I, this is one that has been brought to our attention, and I'm trying to... I mean, if we know right now that we can approve a variance with a lot width, then I don't think I have as big of an issue. But is it section 98 or chapter 98?
Chapter 98, section 98-4.
Do we have the ability to pull that up on the screen? Or is there a big three-ring binder? I'd like to... Okay, I can pull it up on my phone. I can, I don't mind pulling it up on my phone. I was thinking for the folks. Okay. Chapter 98, four, the ordinances? Okay. I got to chapter 98. Thank you very much, councilmember. City attorney, I think I'm with you.
All right. Section 98-4, titled "Variances," permits variances from the provisions of chapter 98. This variance process is not the same process as a chapter 110 variance, which the Board of Adjustment considers. The chapter 110 variance provision does not allow the Board of Adjustment to consider variances for lot width. On the other hand, 98-4 allows the city council, with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board, to grant a variance for any provision under chapter 98, any provision of chapter 98. Chapter 98 is about the creation of divisions of lands in developable lots. 98-107 provides the criteria for lots. And it does say that the size, width, depth, shape, orientation of subdivision lots and the minimum building setback line shall be in conformity with chapter 110 of this code pertaining to zoning. That provision, 98-107, subparagraph A, in my opinion, can be varied based on a variance approved by the city council under 98-4. Not suggesting that, you know, Mr. DeChristopher or anyone else would be entitled to one. All I'm saying is, is that under 98-4, it allows the city council to grant a variance for any provision under chapter 98. And 98, when it talks about coming up with the lot dimensions, does refer you to chapter 110 zoning. But that can be varied based on chapter 98.
Then why does, then why does, why doesn't it just say lot width in 110? Why is it intentionally written that way?
I mean, I don't know. The code has been written for years and varied over the years. I mean, you look at the code in its totality and chapter 98 in its totality, it says the city council can grant variances for any provisions under that chapter.
After a P and Z recommendation?
After a P and Z recommendation, correct. Provided that the criteria in 98-4 for variances is complied with.
Okay. Doesn't make sense to me, but that's okay, and that's my point. I think that I've said enough on this, and I do have... I do have concerns about approving this. There's no scenario where P and Z can't be avoided either, right? So it's got to go back through P and Z, the standard process. And I keep thinking in my head, okay, the lot split application comes back again. I'm still stuck with the points that we first, when we first went over this, that we couldn't get past, was that there was so many issues there. And I haven't had a chance, because we're limited, we have to come in and vote and work through it, to do, to talk about that with my council. And I think those points are raised in the correspondence that we were all sent. That's what I hope we can do. And I think councilmember Kellum, who could not be here tonight, has weighed in on this with us. We've all been together every time, which is another reason that lost perspective as well. And so, council, I think the intent of chapter 70 is that, yes, the council makes the decisions. We follow the law. And I think that taking advantage of this process, which I do think is an effective process, because the magistrate exists beyond this point to go deeper, to review evidence, and to come up with something. So I've said enough on that. But my hope is that this council will consider opposing the agreement, because I don't know what we're allowing him to do that he can't already do today without us. And I feel very uncomfortable voting for something like that. I mean, think about that. Unless I'm wrong, he can go pursue this process today. And maybe I'm missing something big, but that, to me, tells me that probably working a little more than we should.
It is conditional.
Okay.
This would be the first step.
But I don't understand what he's doing here that he can't do already. I'm happy to know...
I mean, that's, I mean, she represents the property owner mayor. I mean, if the council wants to hear from her again, I'm fine with that. I mean, it's, you know, her clients party to this agreement as well. So I have no objections to her saying whatever she wants to say. But again, you know, my advice is not to talk about the merits of the modified plan or a future variance request.
I think, we say it goes, it always comes back to us in this. That's kind of been our theme. I think it needs to go to the magistrate. I'm opposing it to rely on our magistrate to work through the technical evidence. That's what I'm hoping we can...
I'd like to make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional settlement agreement. Is that correct? If I said it right?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by councilmember Davis, got a second by mayor pro Tim Raymond. Any more comments?
Question. All right, so if we deny this, vote against it, it'll go back to the special magistrate. It will be the evidentiary aspect that the mayor is talking about. And then that will come back to us again as his recommendation, based on evidence.
But the subject matter of the hearing is going to be the development order that the city council approved in December. Was to deny the lot split application. Mr. DeChristopher, as a reminder, sought to have his tax parcels recognized as two developable lots. And the council denied that request. The evidentiary hearing or the hearing in front of the magistrate is just going to be on that development order. He's not going to hear a variance request. He's not going to hear, you know, the merits of the modified plan that's attached to the conditional mediated settlement agreement. He's not going to address it, I can predict. He can, I don't want to speak for the magistrate, and neither can, and he's not at liberty to speak today. But I doubt very much he's going to be considering that, consider that plan and the variance request, because that's not what the statute allows him to consider. It allows him to consider the development order that was approved by the council in December. If you remember, back in December, we argued about whether or not, you know, a development order was required. I said, a development order is required, because whenever the city council makes a decision on a development permit application, it is a development order. So the magistrate's role is to consider the development order approved in December. I don't want you all to conflate the previous development order with the modified plan and the variance requests that are set forth in the conditional mediated settlement agreement. Because the magistrate won't consider what's in the conditional mediated settlement agreement. He's going to consider the development order that you approved in December again. I just want to emphasize that point.
But couldn't, okay, so he's got the development order, the modified version. He can still pursue that?
He's not going to give you a recommendation on the modified version. He's going to give you a recommendation on the development order that you approved in December.
Is he giving a recommendation on the modified today? He's, okay. My point is, is, so are we being asked to approve the modified today?
No. You're being asked to allow Mr. DeChristopher to process.
Pursue the modified?
Pursue the modified plan and the variance request. And if he pursues, if this is approved, then he pursues it. Then it goes to the P and Z, goes to the council. And if you deny that, then we're going to go to the magistrate, and then he'll consider your second development order denying the modified plan and the variance request.
But if he, if we oppose, like councilmember Willis said, and he doesn't have to go to the hearing, I don't think he should. I think he should go apply exactly what he's doing here through the normal process following our ordinances. This is a conviction thing for me. I really cannot figure out, and maybe I'm missing it, what Mr. DeChristopher cannot do today. And I don't want to sit up here and keep beating that. But I, of course, I see the changes, but we're not approving these changes today. We're just saying, you have the ability to go pursue P and Z and do those changes. And I'm saying, before we go down that road, sure, the magistrate can sit in. But even without that, I think he has property rights, and he has an ordinance that works for him. And there's a process he can follow. He could go and ask for the same variances. Right?
Isn't, isn't that what this accomplishes? Allows him to continue seeking the variances through the P and Z and then back to us?
No, I'm saying, even, we can't stop him from continuing to seek variances. How can we stop him?
Can we call a question, please?
And I'm very respectful of that.
I mean, this needs to be probably some more discussion. I mean, I want the council, everyone, to be clear. How do I put this? Mr. DeChristopher filed this action, okay? So we're statutorily obligated to follow this process. And there's, and I described the off-ramp. But, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know why he chose this route. I mean, that's Mr. DeChristopher's decision to file a Land Use Dispute Act petition, and we're following the process. And again, this agreement, regardless of whether we were in this process or not, I'm not aware of a code provision that would prevent Mr. DeChristopher to submit a modified application with variance requests.
You are not aware?
I'm not aware of a code provision that would prevent him from doing that, if it's a different request, okay? And I think that's your point, mayor. But the point I would make is, you know, if you're inclined to let him file that new, a different application, and the code doesn't prevent him from filing a different application, then why wouldn't you approve the conditional mediated settlement agreement and allow him to go through the process? And if you ultimately deny the request again, then you are going to have the benefit of a special magistrate hearing, because, you know, we're going to have to follow the process, the Land Use Dispute Act process, and get before the magistrate on another denial. So, you know, I mean, I think councilman Willis is trying to say, well, what's the difference between, you know, letting him file a new application and variance request outside of this process versus approving the settlement agreement and allowing him to file the applications in accordance with the agreement? I think it gets you to the same place.
This one, though, comes with the risk of us supporting it. It moves through, and then, you know, it's going down the same, the same path that we've been down. And Mr. DeChristopher might view the magistrate as someone, a path he does want to take. And he does want to, you know, have that opportunity to go present that evidence. What I'm saying is, no matter what side we're on, we're sitting in the middle of this. I like the idea of having that magistrate first. And that's it. So the question has been called by councilmember Davis. We were, any more final questions? Councilmember Willis, do you have any more questions?
No, I just, I just think we're going to end up at the same point. I think the process just brings us back to the same place.
I cannot support it, because I do not know what I'm approving. What I'm allowing him to do that he cannot do today, it's like monopoly money to me. It doesn't make sense. It's, it's, fake is a poor word, but it just seems, and I don't say fake in a disrespectful manner. I say, the path is in our ordinances. And if we're following the law, that's, that's it. And so my opposition is, is just plainly, because I do not understand what I'm supporting, so...
I'd like to call a question, please.
Thank you. We're ready to go.
Give it a second.
You've already got it. I got the motion by councilmember Davis, second by mayor pro Tim Raymond. Thank you for your patience. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes three to one. That concludes that item. We are now moving on to the next item. We are now moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number six. Approve proposal from L7 Construction in the amount of $1,380,070 for the complete rehabilitation of two clarifiers at the water reclamation facility and authorize the city manager execute the same. So, council, any questions or city manager, anything you want to summarize here for us? We all got the packet. We've looked at it.
Yes, sir. Very grateful for the, very grateful for the low bids, the quality bids that we were able to receive for this. This is ARPA-funded money. We were concerned that we weren't going to be able to get very competitive bids. This is a very needed improvement at the, at the plant and I think we went through it very exhaustively last year. I'm just so grateful that we got a great price for this. And if there's any technical questions, I think Jeff or June could answer those, but I fully support this.
Thank you.
Have we accepted the bid?
This requires council approval.
Oh, okay. So. We have three bids.
This is asking the council to approve one of the three bids from L7 Construction. They're the lowest responsible bidder. It's $1.38 million for the rehabilitation of both clarifiers and it's ARPA-funded.
Do we remember, if we got questions, council, I'm going to jump in there. What was the original amount under Ovivo?
1.25.
1,250,000?
1.25. That was the, the original.
That sounds like what I remember too.
It is.
So roughly.
Jeff, can you confirm what that amount was originally?
1.25.
1.25?
Okay. And do we know the difference? And the one that, that is being recommended out of the three is L7 Construction. They were the lowest bidder. But do we know the difference in what L7 is installing from what Ovivo was going to install?
I'll need one of, one of you to come up to the lectern, please, and respond.
If you're asking what the difference is, the professionals of Ovivo won't be not the one that L7 will put in, but it's Ovivo's equipment.
So Ovivo was going to put in their own equipment, but now another company, L7, is going to come in and put in the same equipment? Do we know why Ovivo did not bid on this?
No, I don't know.
Because they submitted a proposal, right, the first time? And I think that, that's, they're the existing provider, right? And I think we were happy with them.
Definitely.
So do, we don't, you, there's no communication with Ovivo or anything on why they're not going to?
Put it out the bid, we didn't question it.
Perhaps they had too much work and that they couldn't fit it in.
Sure. I know there, yeah, there's, I'm not, I know.
Logical answer.
Usually they would bid again and they were interested in providing the service the first time. And so they were at 1.2 million or whatever it is, and the lowest one's at 1.3. So it's a couple hundred thousand dollars more, but there's not any better equipment? It's the same equipment?
The only thing that I know is the difference is the warranty.
Okay.
If we had Ovivo do it, it would have been a two-year warranty. We have, L7 is a one-year warranty. And plus, Ovivo, I've worked with them before, even if it was past two years, they would have came up.
Do we think L7 will too?
I can't answer for L7.
But they have a two, two-year?
No, one year.
One year? Okay. Do we know why Razorback was, I spoke to Jeff, I think briefly about it, $3 million roughly, 2.948. I requested to look at the, the bids, the, the three of them. And I've, I don't know why it was so much until I got these. Did we look at that and see why the difference was so much higher from the company Razorback LLC? They were at almost $3 million.
Jeff, you'll need to come up to the lectern, please.
And my questions are obviously out to you. And so I think having their help, thank y'all very much. So there was no look at the highest bid?
They were twice the price. I mean, why waste our time?
Well, I think, what if they're right? I mean, I'm just saying, do we know why it was bigger? What if they noticed something that was remedial or environmental that cost a lot, but we didn't go in and look at why?
No, I mean, like I said, they were twice the price.
Well, the, the scope of the bid requires them to hit all of the marks of the Tetra Tech study.
Okay.
This is a, the, the scope of the job is to provide A through Z and they all had to provide that. That was the minimum that we needed. So we have to go with the lowest responsible bidder who meets all of the A through Z.
You have to?
Right, by code.
So it's a number decision with the criteria?
Right.
And that.
Lowest responsible bidder.
Is that in the bid summary? Is that the criteria or those?
It's in the city code.
Okay. So there's, what is the scenario where you didn't take the lowest bidder? You took the middle one?
If, if for some reason a, a little bidder was disqualified for other reasons.
Okay, but so we, you can take then higher bidder, but justified by?
You have to justify it.
Okay. You're not required?
We have disqualified low bids before.
Okay.
The headworks project had a real low bid, but it's obvious that the contractor wasn't qualified. So we do look at that.
But if a bidder hits all the marks and is higher than somebody else who hit all the marks, we would automatically go to the lower cost because they both hit all the marks.
And Tetra Tech designed the clarifiers. They had a bid form in, in the bid package. It was filled out by all three firms. And Razorback was just, I don't know if they didn't know what they were doing or.
Sometimes they give a price that reflects how busy they are.
Exactly.
We can't speak to that. We can only guess.
Got it. Well, I'm looking here on the bid summary. Thank you for giving these and I've never looked at them. They've got a million dollars. There's eight line items. I won't, I won't name them all, but it's, you know, material startup. Demolition was $90,000 the cost for L7, who won the bid. $90,000. The next bidder was at $117,000. That's Florida Design, so they were a little bit higher. Demolition for Razorback is 1.2 million dollars. And so anyways, that's just working through it. That to me is a, why did they have such a high demolition cost? Do they know something we don't know?
You know, I really can't answer that.
I'd like to look into that. I think our, I think, and I think you said they were new. I don't know anything about them. I don't know what the rules are too. I'm kind of talking liberally up here. I know that there's a procedure to follow, but at least with you, I would like to look at this and I'd ask, we, we take this to the next meeting? If not?
Excuse me, Mayor. I would just like to remind you that last year when we discussed this.
Yeah.
You proposed and recommended that we use a local company because you didn't like the idea of a sole source with Ovivo. And that was at 1.25 million dollars. And so I think that this is quite a fair bid. I was thinking that maybe we would have to pay twice, but you recommended.
It is a fair bid.
A local company. You did. You said.
I don't remember that. I might have, but I don't remember.
I remember that very clearly.
Yeah, I like local.
And I do think that we should move forward. We have been waiting. We have a problem at the wastewater where people have to go down and change those fans on the clarifiers and it's over a year. We had a chance to get that done last May. So I want to move forward on this for the sake of safety again, once again, for, for the sake of safety. So it's time to move forward. These are the people that know what they're doing and they know how to.
I know. I was just trying to get through my points. This is 1.4 million dollars.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I also remind that it's costing us a thousand a week. So I agree that we move forward for the safety and for the cost. So I'd like to put a motion that we approve the proposal from L7 Construction.
I'll second it.
I'd like to finish my question. I'm, I, L7, great bid. I'm actually pointing out, we were told it was going to be double.
We thought it might be doubled.
So who were the experts that said that?
I think we're very fortunate that it hasn't been doubled.
I followed this closely and I think I'm being labeled as, you know, local or what. I don't remember saying that. I loved, I think it's a great bid. I think L7's an impressive company. I'm not, I don't care who they choose. I hope you don't want me picking these companies. I don't know what I'm talking about on this stuff. But when I see a line item of 1.2 million and when I, there's red flag number one. Red flag number two is that the 20-year partner, our vendor service provider, didn't bid on it. They originally bid and then they wanted to be the sole source provider. And we, I raised the question, we did, about using sole source with federal ARPA money? We have to put it out to bid for ARPA money. It wasn't about local. The federal government wants us to buy local. It's a big part of Biden's act. It was a big part of Trump. They're all presidents like buying, when it's with federal money. And so that, that was what we were talking about. I'm just looking at numbers. Take the company out and go and if Ovivo didn't bid on it and this company's saying 1.2 million, I hope we look into that. That's, that's it. So if this goes forward, that's fine. I'm not here to slow anything down. I haven't seen receipts for a thousand dollars a week. I also haven't asked for them, but we were told that this would be double. It is not double.
Fortunate.
Not even.
The latest engineer's estimate was 2 million. So we were taking pink to get these, these kind of numbers. The latest engineer's estimate from Tetra Tech was 2 million.
True. No, I agree. I know that it is in us pulling numbers out of the sky, but it's Tetra Tech, in my opinion. Maybe they're right, though. This is my point. Maybe Tetra Tech is right and maybe the 1.9, what was it? 1.9? No. 2.9. I mean, they're a million dollars off. The other ones are, I guess, 500,000 off. Okay, we got a motion on the floor in a second to move forward. I'd like y'all to look into that before you sign or we authorize the sign. I hope that you look into this, city manager, and make sure that there's nothing there. You don't have the direction of the council. I'm not asking for it and so, but I'm just putting it on the record that being, to look into that line item and why Ovivo didn't bid, if there's nothing there, full steam ahead. So, thank y'all. Motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by, was it you, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond? Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam? Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. We are now moving on to item number seven here. This is an exciting one. Approve four proposed resiliency-based projects funding matches up to a combined 150,000 in the city's 2023-24 fiscal year for hazard mitigation grant applications. This is one I got to spend some time on and learned about. I don't have any questions. I think it's fantastic and hats off for putting Cape Canaveral in the running to do that. So, city manager, is there anything that you want to cover on this one?
Yes, Mayor, this is, this request is essentially asking city council to support our striving to get the grant. It's a 75-25% grant. We might get all four projects. We might get one, two, or three, or none. Ultimately, you're, you're giving the green light to staff to pursue this, but you're also saying if you're successful, we know that there's going to be a portion of this grant that we're going to be on the hook for. So not only are you giving us the green light to pursue, but you're giving us the green light to put money into the 23-24 fiscal year budget that would support the match to the extent that we're successful. We're asking for 150,000. It would not exceed that. It'd probably be less than that even if we got all four. But this gives us enough wiggle room that we, we're confident we'll be able to get everything that they're granting us. Zach, is there anything you want to add that I'm missing?
That sounds good, Todd. Yeah, it's very exciting. These are four projects that, only one of which was originally budgeted in the next, or wants to be budgeted in the next fiscal year, but the opportunity that this presents us is that we can jumpstart some efforts for additional pump assets, which are very important. Having these additional pumps would allow us to respond quicker to flood situations across multiple stormwater basins, which is something that we can't really do at this time due to a limited number of mobile pump systems that we have. And even with the permanent pump that we want to do on Center Street, that would still leave several other basins vulnerable. And that's what we just saw unfortunately with the city of Fort Lauderdale, an extremely unprecedented event. You know, rain situations are getting worse and this will really put us in a position where we'd be able to do a lot with more assets that we can take advantage of at a moment's notice.
This local mitigation strategy funding money is available because of the federal dollars that came down for the two hurricanes and the county controls this. We've already met with the county and they've indicated that they would support our, all four of our projects. So we're really looking at a limited window of opportunity because this hurricane money is available. That's where the grant's coming from, the national, from the feds.
Yeah, the, the, our county was, our local LMS committee was supportive across the board for these, which was great. And it is kind of a one-time thing. This is specifically related to Hurricane Ian-related dollars. It's 4.6 million dollars up for grab and we want about 440,000 in total of that. So, and then Hurricane Nicole funding should open up in, actually this week, I believe. So we'll look into that too. But this is a good opportunity and we have to submit by May 31st. So your blessing, so to speak, will put a lot of skin in the game for the people who look over these to say, hey, Cape Canaveral is serious about this. Let's get them some money.
I think it's great. I was, the, the one unique one, the C5 battery storage project, obviously the IRA, we've talked about it, but we, there's two or three options there. Everyone's still kind of learning on it. They haven't wrote the rules on it, but there's one I wanted to point out to our city manager on the, the direct payment.
Right.
To where it really does function as a grant.
Right.
And so I think the odds of us to get in that one with, that one could be almost a zero.
Right.
By the, if you, if it's legal and allowed, but it's like when you put them together, I'm sure that we got to put skin in the game, but that's a, that project probably won't be as much after the tax credit.
Right.
So, and then the sewer pumps, huge, thank you, about 100,000 bucks each roughly, and that's how we got to the 400,000.
Right.
So to the extent that we're successful, you'll see this come again in the 23-24 proposed budget in the workshop.
That's correct.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Council? We good? Okay, and y'all are looking for us to approve the, the funding matches?
Yes. Up to the amount of combined amount of 150,000.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Fine. Thanks, you got it. Councilmember Willis made the motion. Councilmember Davis seconded it to approve. City Clerk? And was that motion clear for you?
Yeah.
It's basically taken the city manager recommendation.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to item number nine, which.
Item eight, sir.
Oh, thank you very much. All right. So item number eight, schedule a date in the May 2023 for a city council workshop with a draft summary report and projects presented at a strategic planning retreat. I saw our city clerk distributing, is this related to this one?
It's in case you need to look at dates and.
Thank you.
What's scheduled and what's not.
Awesome. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We had a very successful retreat a couple weeks ago. We had a very successful retreat a couple of weeks ago, uh, and at that retreat, uh, there were a lot of council consensus items. Among them was, we want to have a workshop to review all these things. There's not a whole lot, we decided we probably don't need to rank anything, but it would be, the council said, we'd like to schedule this workshop just so we can rehair everything. And then from that workshop, my understanding would be that we would come up with the projects that we support. We would make formal motion about mo- these projects that were presented at the retreat, and we would also decide whether they're do-ittoday projects this current fiscal year or put it into a future fiscal year. So what I'm prepared to do at that workshop is take council direction on how we want to, uh, uh, move forward with all of the projects that were presented at the retreat, and we're going to order them in terms of, you know, how much they cost and when they're going to be done. There wasn't a lot of them. So the re, what this item is, is to schedule the workshop meeting to do that. We're proposing we do it at the next council meeting, which is, um, May, you know.
It's on your six.
May 16th?
Yes.
Yeah, right, that's the city's birthday, the 60th birthday.
Yes.
Yes, and on that same day, we're also planning, the 60th anniversary committee has planned a, Lisa, it is a dessert social.
It's a dessert reception.
Dessert reception in the lobby. So what we thought we could do is kind of put all these birds in one basket and say, we've, we'll start the reception at, uh, 4 o'clock, Lisa?
4:30 to 5:30.
4:30 to 5:30, then 5:30 to 6:00, have the workshop that we're talking about, and then 6 o'clock, have the regular council meeting. And that's consistent with prior council direction about workshops, if we can schedule them before the regular council meeting. So really, the only question is, do you like that date? Two questions. Do you like that date and do you like that time slot?
May 15?
16.
16.
This is, okay, so hold a workshop on Tuesday, May 15?
Yeah, there's a typo there. It says the 15th.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's, so, okay, just a typo, got it.
Thank you for catching that.
So I, we see 16.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, I'm looking at my calendar, but I mean, we obviously have this reserved.
I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
We don't have all that many projects for the next budget year. And that way, we'll have all our ducks in a row.
Right.
So that we can really look at all the information at that point.
We'll have Doug Thomas's draft, uh, report.
Yes.
From the retreat as well at that.
Thank you.
I think, I think councilmember Kellum, that gives up us two, or almost a mile between now and then.
Yes, that'll be better.
It's not like it's next week, right? That would be, I think. I'm good. Y'all good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, May 16th, Tuesday, just as you recommend.
So, um, mayor, if we could, if we could have a motion to schedule the workshop date for May 16th, 2023 at 5:30 PM.
It's so moved.
And this is 30 minutes?
If you feel in.
I saw 4:00 PM.
That's the, the 60th anniversary dessert social.
Yeah, that's 4:30 to 5:30 in the lobby, and then your workshop will be 5:30 to 6:00 and council meeting at 6:00.
So, yeah, if, unless council wants to move that, those times, and, or the date, it's up to you.
Call a question, please.
I don't like that. I, I, I didn't realize that it was only 30, I can't, we can't get through that in 30 minutes.
Sure.
5:30 to 6:00.
Okay, well, I mean, unless, yeah, I'm going to need to meet longer on that, and I'll end up, that's not going to work for me, and I don't think it would, that, there's just.
Can, can we adjust it?
30 minutes is, I mean.
Can we adjust it to an hour?
By the time we, we get ready for, and it's nice to have five minutes in between the, the, the meeting, we really have 25 minutes, 20, and, and think about how 25 minutes goes with five of us. We each get five minutes. That's not including any city staff helping or talking, so it's really two minutes to, for the whole budget. We took in a lot of six, five or six hours of, um, exciting strategic planning information, and this is a time for us to, to sort through it. I think we spent a couple hours last year, but an hour would be certainly better.
We have a motion on the floor.
I know, we do have a motion for 5:30, yes. City manager?
Yes, um, Lisa, we could adjust it if the council wants to. So four to five for the dessert, and then let's start the commi- the, uh, workshop at five.
We can do it at 6:00.
We would have to dispose with, of the motion to do that, mayor.
If people are lining up for cake, they're going to do it at four. It'll be over quick.
And the birthday, it is May 16th or 15th?
Yes, sir, it's the 16th.
It is the 16th, yeah.
I know that because it's my wife's birthday.
Oh, wow. Okay, so we're s-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to add a little clarity to this situation, like help things a little bit easier? Obviously, at this meeting, we'll have, planning to have all the CIPs for you, but you remember from the strategic retreat, there's only handful of projects you're really going to discuss. So even though you have all the CIPs in front of you, you're only going to take the handful of which the city manager is saying, we'll take a look at these and see which ones are noteworthy of, you know, how we want to spend the money or whatever. So it being said that way, 30 minutes may not be actually unrealistic because council is familiar with all the projects already. So maybe 40, maybe 45 minutes would be better to, you know, if you, if somebody gets hung up on something. But if we go back to the strategic retreat and you remember.
Yeah.
We had all, council had all collectively said, wow, you know, there's not a lot of big-time things going on here. So I'm just wanting to bring that clarity, if that helps you a little bit.
It does, and it will be different. If we could, if we could start it at five, uh, and then we're done at 5:30, and it does take 30 minutes, I, I'm just saying, a little buffer is nice for us, especially if we've been here since four. Chomping on.
So if that's the case.
Crock cakes crawling up the wall.
Procedurally, we would need the, make her the motion to withdraw the mo- main motion.
I believe so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to withdraw the motion. Or does she need to do it?
But unanimous consent, you can withdraw the motion.
All right. Unanimous cons, uh, let's withdraw, we're going to change the time. You want to keep it?
Yeah.
Did you make the motion? And it was for 5:30?
Yes, I think 5:30 will be fine.
And you, and you seconded the motion?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think that we have a unanimous.
Right, so therefore, the motions on the floor needs to be voted on.
Okay.
And/or amended.
Okay. Um, I'm going to, I would like to do it at five. Y'all don't, and so obviously, I'm going to oppose it, but. Okay. City clerk?
Yep. Councilmember Davis?
We're voting, excuse me, we're voting to have it 5:30 to 6:00, correct?
Correct.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
Against.
So the motion fails.
When you said four, I got excited because I thought you said, were saying 4:00 PM. Okay, so it's a split.
The motion fails, and we're ready for a new motion.
Okay.
I make a motion, we meet from 5:00 to 6:00 after the 4 o'clock cake.
4:30 is the cake.
We would move it to four, if that was, we need an hour for cake.
So. Okay, so.
What was that?
Say it again, councilmember Willis, what do you, if you don't mind, saying a four?
Yes, I make a motion that we meet for the workshop at 5:00 PM to 6:00, and that the cake and festivities begin at four.
Okay. And second?
Okay. Um, I will second the motion. We got a motion for the cupcakes at four, workshop at five. Any more discussion on that? I'll, I'll call the vote and we'll see where this goes. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Against.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Against.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
The motion fails.
You ever played Tetris and you can kind of, or not, you know, tic-tac-toe and you can kind of see your future? That just happened to all of us. Um, okay, so what are we going to do? I think that we don't take any action on it, and.
There's could, there could be a third motion, which was a compromise.
4:50.
How about, um, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we start at 5:15 to 6:00. We'll start the workshop at 5:15 and the council meeting at 6:00.
The compromise was 5:00. It was four to, to 6:00, and you split the measurement, it was 5:00, but if you, 5:15, you want that motion? And what time's the, okay, let's do, and, and what time do you want to do?
No, and the, she said 4:30. I mean, how much cake are you going to eat? You eat a piece of cake.
4:30 workshop, 5:15?
No, no, no.
4:30.
Cake. 5:15.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Is the, the workshop. 6:00 is the council meeting.
Yeah, we're not voting on the council meeting, though, but I understand.
No, yeah.
Okay, so you, so you, you move 15 minutes, uh, okay.
My issue is, I, I work till 3:00. So for me to get home, shower, change, and get here at 4:00 is difficult for me. So that's why I am against, and I'm better.
Certainly respect that. We might be trying to do too much in one day. Seriously, we're trying to do three things.
I think, I think one day is better than.
There's only.
Uh, two or three days.
Yeah.
So, okay, so 5:15, I made the motion that we'll try to start the workshop at 5:15.
And the cake at 4:30?
Yes.
Okay, you got a motion for that. 4:30 cake, 5:15 workshop. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second by councilmember Davis, motion by Mayor Pro Tim. City clerk, does that, 4:30 cake, 5:15?
Yep.
Start time makes sense?
Yep.
Any more comments on that? Councilmember Willis, is this gonna, is this where you need to be?
Well, let's see.
I don't, I don't need cake anyway, but.
I don't either.
I just, we're, we're haggling over cake.
Let's call a question, please.
Are you good?
Yeah, we're good.
City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Okay.
So everybody gets to eat their cake, cake and eat it too.
But not at 4:00?
No.
Is that the same day as the popsicles?
No, but I was, but I was going to say that.
I need a new topic.
Then on multiple.
Heck, yeah. Well, thank y'all, that's exciting. Um, the next one and final one here, been working towards, is item number nine, which is, uh, discuss the installation of the drown zero stations near public beach crossovers in collaboration with the Cocoa Beach Rotary Club. I see we have Beeper stuck around with us. Thank you for being here. If you'd like to.
I'd love to.
Yes, and if you want the opportunity to, to say anything, you're more than welcome, but thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Um, so, city, uh, manager and I, I don't know, I think this has been something we've been talking about for a while. If you want to explain, Todd, or.
I'll open it up there.
About the opportunity?
Sure. Uh, this is a discussion item, um, which may authorize, if you so choose, the city manager to, um, authorize the installation of drown zero stations near public beach crossovers in collaboration with Cocoa Beach Rotary Club. This has been something that we've talked about for several years. Um, it, it, it hasn't yet materialized, but mayor, you brought it up recently. Uh, we tasked some staff to work with you and this organization, and we're really excited about it. And I'd like to hear from Zach and Kyle about the program, please.
Yeah, sure. So, um, like Todd said, we were approached by the, uh, Cocoa Beach Rotary Club. Um, they have a total of 26 stations currently. Um, so we could, we could have up to 26 stations. They are free of charge, funded by grant money from the Surfing's Evolution and Preservation Foundation. Um, I know that the city used to have some of these stations, and then they got destroyed in a storm, and I think the Rotary Club at the time just didn't have the money or the funding to replace them, so, um, they, they've got that funding now. Um, we did some, some backgrounds, uh, did our due diligence, uh, made some site visits. We spoke with Cocoa Beach, uh, where they have 46 stations. Um, and, and Patrick from Rotary Club, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but, um, they have been very satisfied with, with the drown zero stations. Um, there's been, even just recently, yeah, I wasn't even seeking it out, but I've seen a couple news articles referencing people who have, who have used the, the lifesaving rings to, to rescue people caught in, in rip currents. Um, and it's, uh, it's been, as you all probably know, uh, the number of drownings has been a little worse this year. I quote a couple things in the Agenda cover, uh, one that I found pretty, pretty alarming. On December 8th, 2022, uh, there were reports that there were three drownings and almost 150 rescues between Thanksgiving and December 8th. So that's, you know, a matter of couple weeks. And then even since then, there, there have been a couple more drownings. So, um, the, uh, installation of the stations doesn't seem to be too bad, and the club would assist with that. We would have our Public Works Services Department sort of check on it as they do their rounds on the beach, um, but if anything is stolen or damaged, the, um, club has offered to do any replacements that might be necessary. Like I said, they have 26 stations, we have 17 crossovers, so there are some logistics that will need to be worked out as far as where exactly we wanna put them, if we wanna use them all. And then I think, really, the, the signs would need to be made by the Rotary Club, and we would need to... So the, because they're monopoles, they're, there's an exception from FDEP that they don't require a permit. But they did recommend getting a marine turtle permit holder to clear the area and make sure that we're not anywhere near, you know, any nesting sites, so... I've been speaking with the designated permit holder, and we're kind of deciding on a date, it seems like it might be sometime in May, he can get those surveys done. So...
Kyle, can we talk about what it looks like to the, to our citizens? There's a monopole mounted on the beach where a life preserver ring is attached to that, and where is that pole located in reference to, say, a crossover?
Sure, so, at first, when they were installed in Cocoa Beach, they were actually sort of right at the crossover, as you come out, they're right there. They have moved them a little bit closer, just so that, obviously, they're closer to the ocean. So I think it's, any, between 10 and 20 feet of the, of the dune line is typically where they are.
Last time, when they were, we had problems with them during the hurricane, is that where they were located, or were they located someplace different?
They were, they were a little closer.
Mm-hmm.
They were closer to the board, further from the water? Closer to the board?
Closer to the dune. To the dune line, correct?
Thank you, Kyle.
So these would be simply dug into the sand, they wouldn't be affixed in any type of medium like concrete. So if worse really came to worse, and we could put it into our emergency plans to take them out, if a bad hurricane is coming with enough lead time. But the beach has narrowed since it was re-nourished in 2019, so in abundance of caution, we'd probably have it a little further back, because the beach is probably about half the width that it was back in 2019, so... The tide can get pretty high, it got up to the dunes a few days ago, too, so... But we're confident we could keep these safe with enough warning.
They were able to move them in this last, these last few hurricanes pretty, pretty easily, I think, a combination of city staff, and then they have some, some people who could help out.
And I'd like to hear, perhaps the gentleman from the Rotary Club could address this, is what type of problems were encountered? Were there, was there vandalism, was there theft, and, and how is that dealt with?
Thank you, and if you speak in the mic, that'll help everyone listen, we still got some folks listening from homes, so thank you.
My name is Patrick Balls, I'm a citizen of Cape Canaveral, but also a member of the Cocoa Beach Rotary Club. The, we, there is some vandalism, yeah, it happens. We had, we didn't have a lot of problems with it, but it, it occurs occasionally. People would just destroy these poles. We have certain rings who sometimes disappear, but we'll give you plenty of rings that you can store, so you can replace them whenever that is necessary. Any other questions, sir?
No, sir, thank you, that, that was perfect, thank you.
I, I have a question. What, what is the yearly fee for adoption?
$500. And with those $500, we pay replacements and repairs, and, and also, we also use what's, what's left for our older water safety projects that we have in our club.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I do have another question. I'm looking at the photograph that's on the monitor right now, and there's language on there for Cocoa Beach. We would want to make sure we have the opportunity to approve appropriate language for the city Cape Canaveral, for the signage. For instance, we don't have lifeguards out there, and this says, always swim near a lifeguard, and that would be confusing on our beaches.
Sure.
Okay.
That's up to the city to decide what we want.
Yeah, and I spoke with Wyatt Borneff, who's, who's responsible for installing a lot of these, and he did confirm that we can get them to say whatever we want, so it wouldn't necessarily have that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
We see this as a collaboration between our club and, and the city. There is no Rotary Club in, in Cape Canaveral, so we take care of the two communities here, as, as a Rotary Club.
Thank you, and the, so, did, there's some latitude on, on the design of it? Are, are they already made and ready to install, or?
Yep, they're made already.
Okay, so...
Just the signage on the top we're talking about.
Okay. Got it, yeah, I think it'll come down to maintenance and upkeep, you know, if they get blown down. But I do think it makes sense to have that. I've been seeing the desk, thank you for providing, I don't know who added all that data. Yeah, I mean, it is startling.
Yeah.
We, we looked at this as a council a few years back, and something the city's looked at over the years, lifeguards. But I think the whole county's starting to have this conversation now, so might be a good time to circle with the county and try to get better coverage, and these only help. So thank you so much to add, to help make our beaches safer, and... I think we can expand off this and do some really cool things, but if, yeah, my request was if we can install them in a way where they are like, you don't have to remove them, that'd be great, but I know that's easier said than done, so... Any other comments? Thank you, and thank you to the entire Rotary. We are, we're excited about this opportunity, hopefully we can make it work.
So Mayor, a motion would be appropriate to authorize staff to install the stations, public work staff?
So moved.
Okay, City Clerk, you got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymonds, second by Councilmember Davis. To authorize the installation of the drown zero stations, as the city manager said. Any other comments? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
All right, motion passes for, thank you, guys, gentlemen, appreciate it, entire Rotary Club, and I have my Rotary ruler that was given to me up in the mayor's office, so when you come back, I have to do a tour once, when they're installed, and thank y'all very much. I think this is really cool. All right, so that concludes the items, we are now at the reports portion of the meeting. If there's any reports, council, please go down the line. Councilmember Davis?
No, just been working with the Space Coast League of Cities and following the legislation, legislation that's been going on.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Uh, yes, we're, as I said earlier, Lexi Miller and I are meeting with FDOT on the 3R project for the resurfacing and whatnot, and we're going to be proposing some improvements and promoting our projects in Cape Canaveral. And speaking to them about pushing forward the crosswalks as best we can. And then on Friday, Arland Blau and I will be taking a tour of the beep facilities in Orlando, the autonomous mobility options, so I'm, I'm excited about that, so...
Great, thank you.
Been a busy month with strategic planning, and then we had Friday Fest, and I attended legislative days in Tallahassee, and we met with about 10 local representatives and senators. And naturally, we proposed what we like about home rule, and talked about that with the advocacy team. And I thought that it was a good experience, I think that it's good for us to see the process. I'm not sure how much help I could be individually, but nevertheless, I am part of the advocacy team, and we're working with what we're interested in. And we also did Space Coast League of Cities. We hosted this month, and that was successful. And I think that's about it, we have our, we, we had a list of the legislative priorities, and of course, affordable housing is on top of the list, and that was proposed by Transportation and Intergovernmental Affairs, which I sit on. And hopefully, I will make an application to get on the county Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I've been invited to do that, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
I'm very grateful to be back in the good old USA, but I gotta tell you, I think Dave and Zach and other staff members are already sick of me saying, you wouldn't believe what I saw in France, we should do this. There's probably a lot more of that coming, got really energized by the cool things that I saw over there that I don't see any, any other city in America doing, but we're, we're looking at things that are really forward-thinking, and I'm very, very proud of where the city of Cape Canaveral is right now. Coffee with the city manager is this Friday, 10 o'clock, Menity Sanctuary Park.
Awesome. Thank you, and welcome back, hopefully it was laissez-faire? And relaxing, and you feel recharged, so...
We, we got, we got rerouted through Istanbul unexpectedly, so a little unusual.
They did great, everyone, so...
Yes, they did.
Thank you for preparing.
Mia and the whole staff really did well.
You can enjoy your vacations moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for doing that. Any other, city attorney? Any reports? Our county sheriff's office, Commander Keck, I didn't see, I thought you were up and down, you're fast. Any reports for us, anything we need to know?
No, I don't think so. We, we have the council cop, the Councilman Willis on a march, right, for our party?
First Monday of April.
Man, time flies.
I'm very happy to see that grow and flourish, and thank you for continuing to do it, between our city manager going out, Councilmember Willis, and... That, that is real community policing, right? I mean, you're out there connecting with the people and trying to understand and educate, so thank you. I know the citizens appreciate it, and we learn so much from them. My reports is related to something that I think came out of one of those meetings, we saw that issue that was brought up earlier, the plastic bag, I think... The, yes, that...
That was terrible.
His, his question about that is, I, I responded, we're on it, and I think I can say that with confidence, right? I mean, that's...
Yeah, we, we was after the meeting, we talked to him about it, and I think one of our agents would be joint terror task force, reached out to him afterwards, cuz he...
Good.
Get some feedback on that. And luckily, we don't worry since, you know, out here locally, I've seen some throughout the state, other places, but yeah, it's just with the political climate and that being debated up in Tallahassee right now, it's just bringing a lot of those, those unfortunate events out, so...
Some of the bad?
Uh, it was just some, some hate stuff, anti-Jewish sentiment.
I didn't know what that was.
Things like that, and then, you know, we've, and, and I know one of the things is, is we try to, we try not to push it out and put it out, because that's kind of, that's what they want, you know, they want as much notoriety as they can, can get on those type of things, and if we share it and post it, now, we're just kinda helping them with their cause.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, one of those things, it's unfortunate, but just crumble it up, throw it away, you know, it's just somebody was just tossing some in, in driveways as they were driving down the street.
Commander, we...
Was that on for the weekend?
Oh, this was probably about a month, three, four weeks ago now, yeah.
Commander, this doesn't appear to be targeted, it was just random driveways.
Yeah, yeah, just random, just to drive down the street one house after the, as much as they could, as they, as they threw, so...
It made it to my house, and every, there was, it was every house, pretty much, that had a car. And they were strategic, they took their bags, and it looks like they threw them, or they kinda slid into the car a little, and some of them, and that's why I didn't notice some, but yeah, that's, I think, the frustration with the littering charge, our best hope is if that's a $150 misdemeanor, a fine, if we could pull off multiple counts. I mean, I don't have the right to take plastic bags and rocks and throw it on Mayor Pro Tim's, that's littering, but could, could we have, if we've got eyes and ears out there, you know, with ring doorbells and evidence as we're working, to send a message that says, hey, we're gonna pursue multiple counts here? I don't know if that's possible, or state attorney, who handles that stuff, but thank you again, it did come up one more time again, so... That was all I had, thank you.
I was surprised that people did not know that we have our anti-hate statements that we have, I think we have two. And I thought that people were aware of that, but maybe we should bring it out again.
I, I think it would, those people, whoever's doing that doesn't know we have that, and I don't think they care, but I think we, the people of Cape Canaveral feel that way, and I don't think anyone shares their message, so...
I'm not talking about the people doing this, I'm talking about people in our city.
Oh.
I was surprised that they didn't know that we have that.
Yeah, I think that's good, if we can, maybe that would be worthy of sharing on Facebook? Yeah, thank you, okay. So, one final question, EV charging, do we have a quick update on that? That's one that...
Zach?
Yes, we are, this close to getting a finalized quote. It's literally come down to branding the, the plates with Cape Canaveral lettering, just getting a final quote on that. But we had a scoping meeting with the electrician, and it looks pretty good, upgrade the wiring, upgrade the stations, and I think I'd be comfortable probably getting it back to you by, by June at the latest, so, pretty good.
And then we would have to approve the procurement, the installation, so installed and removed?
Yeah, the stations would, the current stations would be removed, and the new ones would be put in their place, and then we would institute a fee schedule.
Are you thinking about a, a capital item in the next year's budget, or doing it out of contingency this year?
The sooner the better, I would think. It is revenue generating, so we could start getting revenue back immediately, but it's council's desire to do it now, do it later, we could add whatever you want. It's not that...
Oh, go ahead.
My inquiry was, I love the fact that they're revenue generating, but I think the spirit of, one of the first things you put on the agendas was this, and is to stop the bleeding, though, and I know it's, we, my back of the napkin math, you know, measuring foot kilo, but I, you know, there, it's starting to get where the residents, and, and I agree with them, hey, can we turn it off, and then, you know, set the stage? So that, that would make me feel better, I think, if, if, if we're 90 days out before we could remove them, I'm not sure I wanna continue to go 90 more days of electricity. The folks who really started questioning and asking about this now are saying, is it still, you know, and I don't think they're, they're gonna be in a hurry to get new ones installed, but they would be, they're, they're ready to see that stop, you know, and I can respect that, so...
I think so.
We, we were told by the contractor that we're looking at, that once something is agreed upon, they could start construction within 60 to 90 days.
And they're probably pretty, you know, it's not like they have to do a bunch of...
Not really, it was just some new wiring.
The infrastructure's there, right, for a lot of the existing locations, for trenching and...
Correct, that is all there, the conduit, even the C5 has conduit space, it would just need to arrange some breakers, and then just, they're gonna upgrade our wiring, too, just so it's good to go for the next 10, 15 years. And then we would implement a fee schedule, which we're looking at, and then we can also, we're gonna talk about how to program the stations, so we could do things like raise the price after four or five hours to prevent loitering, or turn them off, so that there's no overnight parking.
That's awesome.
We have to figure that stuff out, but the possibilities with, with these new stations are pretty exciting, and I think it is warranted now, that they're being used a lot, and it's the sector that's growing within the automobile industry, and it won't stop. So they will be used more, the cars are getting bigger in terms of their battery capacity, take longer to charge. They're not meant to be fast chargers outside their destination, you come here, you enjoy the beach, you know, maybe you need a quick stop on the way to Kennedy Space Center, so I think it'll get, get us a good place for a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, we, I've noticed several people that leave their cars at Banana River Park to charge all day, so they're...
It's just starting to get to that point for, I think, all of us, where...
Yeah.
It is.
That's exciting, that we can get them turned around that fast, but... Sorry, Councilmember, is that all you had? Okay, those were my reports, coyotes, that's a big one, I hope we can do something quickly on that, cuz it does seem like daily. I will forward, I think I got five emails over the past few weeks, and it's not exciting to read or watch, and I've dealt with this firsthand, but, I mean, it's bad, and these coyotes, we know where they are, you know, they're in the three wooded lots of Cape Canaveral. Central, behind Anchorage Avenue, or the central ditch.
I've seen, I've seen a coyote during the day at Salona on the River.
Villages of Seaport, day before yesterday, saw one in the middle of the day, it was emailed to my mayor, email. It showed up on a ring doorbell.
They're up on Villages of Seaport, they're up at Salona Lakes, everything else, they're all over the place, I seen them coming and going through our entry cameras, and I'll also say that they also came in, they're not just after cats and dogs. Our swans had three eggs laid, and they came in and just...
Oh! And I remember seeing those groups, like, hey, are the swans missing and stuff, but we, to me, the coyotes, it, it does seem that over the past, it's probably the blue, the development, Blue Origin and all that that's happening out there, the Space Center, you know, that's where a lot of them are, they're pushing north, but they have to cross one of those bridges to get out here, cuz we're on an island, so... Anyways, this is something I was happy we took up. And that concludes, if I left anyone out on reports, I think fire's not here, but we're good to go. Anything else? All right, council, ready to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.